Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for August 8th, 2018. If we could please call the roll.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving forward then to item number three. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Mokel. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving forward to item number four, Consent Agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Councilor Lehman?
Four C three and four C five.
Counselor?
I'll move the consent agenda as modified.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Councilor Luce. Before we vote, we will read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for August 8th of 2018. Four A one approves the minutes of the July 17th, 2018 meeting. Four A two adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-088, which appoints election judges for August 14th, 2018 primary and November 20th, excuse me, November 6th, 2018 general election. Four A three approves appointment of Daniel Mock to fill a vacancy and finish remaining term on the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Four A four approves the temporary on-sale liquor license for the VFW at the River Valley Festival on August 11th of 2018 in Yuber Park and adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-086, which approves a one-day premise permit for that festival in Yuber Park. Four A five ratifies the city administrator's approval of the Pullman Club's request to use a section of the parking lot in front of their business for an event and suspends City Code 114.11 to allow consumption of alcohol in the parking lot for August 4th, 2018 from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. Four A six adopts a proclamations policy, which allows the mayor to sign proclamations on behalf of the city council and the City of Shakopee and sets parameters for that policy. Four B one adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-082, which approves the final plat of Windermere South. Four B two approves the final plat for West Gateway Shakopee, excuse me, West Shakopee Gateway First Edition. Four C one approves suspension of City Code Section 130.45, which allows CR-16 Pedestrian Crossing Project contractors to perform work from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturdays through the end of September of 2018. Four C two authorizes the execution of a small wireless facility co-location agreement with Verizon Wireless. Four C four approves the order of a feasibility report for the 2019 Street Reconstruction Project, Number CIF-TAC-19-TAC-003, and that's the final item.
Excellent. We have a motion on the consent agenda and a second. We've read it into the public record. There is no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Let's move on then to item number five. Now I'd like to call in any resident citizen that would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda.
I have something to say.
Okay, Councilor Luce.
I was recently shopping with a friend of mine and I came across these little guys here. And I thought they'd really work good in the squad cars. They've got no parts that children can choke on and they're very soft, very friendly. And if the police department would take these, I have 29 other little friends of his that would like to have an adopted one. I'll get them to you at the first break.
Perfect.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else would like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none then, we will move to item number six. Items removed from consent agenda. And we will move to four C three, Change Order for Veerling Drive Phase Two Project. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I took it off for two reasons. The first one is a previous item that we approved into consent, four B two, the Gateway Project Final Plat, I wasn't sure if the changes for the road are included in that final plat or not.
Michael?
Mayor and council, so if you remember, you all looked at an agreement with OPUS. You should be seeing that agreement, I believe, September 3rd is when it's advertised for. And one of the changes they had requested was doing two retention ponds instead of just one. And so I believe the city engineer can address it more accurately, but the biggest change was there was a retention pond moved to where there was formerly a subdivision. They cut all the trees down when they started digging in there. The MinDOT had nicely left all of the foundations and so they ended up having to haul out a lot of extra dirt and concrete to be able to build those retention basins.
Follow-up questions, Counselor Lehman?
It lays out in here that the layout would impact the current Veerling Drive roadway project, requiring redesign. So I wanted to make sure that whatever was approved in the final plat was consistent with whatever the changes in the roadway were.
Councilmember, yes, that's correct. So on the final plat that you adopted tonight, there are two drainage and utility easements over two new ponds.
Okay. And the second reason I took it off is because I've been consistent about the price of this going way beyond what we originally said it was going to be. So I took it off to vote against it.
Okay, I understand that. Counselor, further questions? Counselor Whiting?
No, I don't, no other questions, but I'd make a motion to approve the change order for the Veerling Drive Phase Two Project.
All right. I have a motion and a second by Councilor Mokel. Further discussion? 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 Counselor Luce?
Being that MinDOT left us a little secret present there, is there any recourse that we have to? I mean, that shouldn't have been allowed to leave foundations in the ground.
Steve?
Mayor and councilmembers, good evening. We will follow up with MinDOT afterwards and do a little more investigation. At this point, the foundations were there. And a matter of fact, the foundations were filled with additional concrete. So not only did we have to dispose of the foundations, but the foundations were full of probably other foundations in those areas. So that, we, they have been removed. They have been hauled off and disposed of at this time. We negotiated with the contractor for actually a little lower price than what is in this change order. I think there was about a little over $60,000 for the removal of the concrete and debris in this change order. But since we put this in the council item, we have reduced it to about $44,000. So we have reduced it substantially. And then as a follow-up with MinDOT, we will be looking to see what the agreements were with the turnover of the right-of-way and their, when they acquired those properties and demoed the houses on there. So we will be following up with that. I don't have an answer this evening.
Thank you.
More?
No, I just think it needs to be looked into. I don't know that it needs to entail the gentleman to my right here or get the attorneys involved. Forty-four thousand's going to be eaten up pretty quick, so. But I think a little discussion with MinDOT doesn't hurt.
Pull the agreement, see what it said. That's a, those are old foundations. They haven't been around in a...
Yeah, but they should not have been left there in any circumstance, no.
Counselor Lehman?
I'm sure it was probably purchased as is, but...
Probably, yeah.
Doesn't hurt to look.
All right. Thank you. Further discussion? Discussion? Motion on the table and a second. Discussion? Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you. Moving ahead then to four C five. Counselor Lehman, this is professional service agreement?
This item specifically talks about the Canterbury Commons TIF agreement and stuff. And it seems like this is, to approve this prior to having that conversation on Canterbury would seem backward to me. I guess the other comment I would have would be that it's unfortunate that we didn't do the traffic study in this area at first. I suggested that back prior to the EAW and then when we got the EAW findings back, that was also recommended by the state. We would have known a lot of this stuff upfront and it might have changed parts of the project. So it's just unfortunate that, it just seems like some things are being done backward here.
Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, I know we've approved the agenda, but I would suggest maybe we move it to 9A, three and a half?
I don't know if that'd accomplish what we want. I mean, that...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Reynolds?
This is just the contract for taking a look at it. If, if, if the council does not approve it tonight, then there would be no reason to do this particular actions with SRF. So, you know, it certainly can be pushed off, but it's certainly not necessary to do so.
Okay, Counselor?
Well, let's make a motion to authorize the execution of a professional services agreement with SRF Consulting Group Incorporated for design services for the 12th Avenue Reconstruction Project CIF-19-004, pending the approval of our other items on the agenda.
Motion on the table?
A second.
Second by Councilor Mokel. Further discussion? I mean, I think this is an important piece here.
And one caveat to that is, is that this ultimately will have to be done. If the TIF is not approved, then all of the taxpayers and the city will have to pay for it and it will, as opposed to the TIF proceeds. So the TIF is how it's outlined to be funded at this point, based upon what is before you now. But that change, we would not approve it if the council doesn't approve it tonight. And then we would bring it back with a different funding source, whether it be bonding or other options.
More discussion? Motion on the table and a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you. Let's move on now to recess for the EDA Authority Meeting. Entertain a motion. Counselor Whiting?
Second.
Oh, and I have a second. Discussion? 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 All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? We stand in recess.
So I'll call a Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting for August 8th, 2018 to order. Please note the roll. You all have an agenda in front of you and the packet is motion to approve the agenda by Ms. Mokel. Is her second. Mr. Mars, any changes to the agenda, I guess I should ask? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda, I'll be taking off the minutes. That's an error. So therefore, we won't have a consent agenda tonight. First item will be the discussion on the meeting minutes. Meeting minutes under four C facade improvement loan. To my memory, correct me if I'm wrong, folks, but the motion, the original motion to approve that was made by Mr. Mars. It died for a lack of a second. At the request of the city attorney, he requested that we have a motion of denial on record. That motion was made, there was a second, and that vote was four to one for denial. Am I remembering that correctly?
I concur, that's correct.
So the meeting minutes that we have here is saying that the motion approved the applicant's request and that's an error.
That's correct. And just a reminder, if you notice that beforehand, Counselor, please let us know and we'll make sure to correct it in advance.
Okay. So a motion to correct the meeting minutes would be in order?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion to correct the meeting minutes for the EDA for July 17th, four C facade improvement loan. Motion which was failed because of a lack of a second and then a second motion that was to deny and that passed four to one. Second?
Motion by Mr. Mars, second by Mr. Luce. Any other discussion on the motion? You get your hand. Nope. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Now motion to approve all of the minutes would be in order?
Don't move.
It's Mokel?
Don't move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Luce. Any discussion on the minutes in general? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Four A, Contract for Private Development with Canterbury. Mr. Kirsty?
Good evening, Mr. President and board members. This is on two places on your agenda, so both in the EDA and city council. We have tonight with us, tag team kind of on the presentation towards the end will be SRF, who will talk about the pretty extensive traffic study they did, not of just the Canterbury area, but this entire region. That was at a request from the county and they can talk about that and we have some slides for them. We also have our attorney here from Kennedy and Graven and also from Springstead. So they'll be able to answer any of the technical questions and Darren came back from vacation just for you. So if there are any other questions, he can hopefully answer them. So this has been underway from a planning standpoint for about 10 years. They started serious discussion about two years ago. It's an underdeveloped discussion, section of the city, as we've talked about in the past. The city has built up around Canterbury. There's really no public infrastructure through this site. It's missing public connections that were noted in the 2030 comp plan. And the whole idea about this project was to change how people think of this area of the city and how they access it. So the concept plan that you'll see includes residential, including 600 or so market rate apartment, townhouses, senior housing, corporate headquarters sites, hotels, entertainment uses, mixed-use development, restaurants, retail, and offices. So this is the concept site plan. So the apartment is the Dorn project over in this area here. Townhouse is below that and then a proposed senior housing development with a small retail, potential office corporate headquarters here. The other blue site over here is another potential corporate headquarters. There are some offices along 83, a signature building with some out parcels right here on the corner. All the barns will be demolished in this area, new barns constructed up on the top here. And then a new sort of mixed-use village with some major public amenities would be built in this area. So for, to get to this transformational development, TIF funds are only being used for street construction right-of-way for outside parties. So Canterbury is not using that money, but if other parcels, you'll hear from SRF, there are some potential right-of-way that needs to be acquired that's outside of the Canterbury project. Also, it can be spent on allowable sidewalks, trails, and some street trees and then utilities, including stormwater, sanitary sewer water, and electric. So this is kind of the image for the transformational part of the development. You can see the Canterbury grandstand in the rear. So there would be a fairly dense area with retail restaurants, walkable area that connects into the grandstand area. So as you come into the project, the grandstand kind of would become the backdrop for this area. And these are some of the inspirational elements that the urban designers have looked at. These are not being paid for by the TIF. But if you remember, sculptures were a big part early on, so this is kind of the theme they're looking at. Some sort of public amphitheater that might be up against the racetrack so city events, other private events could be held there. And then some more iconic kind of water features. And then there is a pretty exhaustive trail system through this project. This is kind of one of the big missing links. When you get to the end of the upper drainageway trail right now, it just kind of ends on a street on the other side. And this will connect it through the project, through some areas next to the drainageways. So it has a really potential to connect from a bike and pedestrian facility standpoint. This area right now is pretty heavily used by pedestrians. If you go out there at lunchtime, you'll see, I think about 400 of the 800 Seagate employees walking around. This will really kind of join this area together and make it a major recreational amenity. So the approximate TIF splits proposed in the contract is 10 million in city GO TIF bonds to pay for 12th Avenue reconstruction, including the area outside of the TIF, two roundabouts at Eagle Creek and Veerling, and payment to Scott County for additional County Highway 83 improvements. That leaves about $23 million available for Canterbury to build Shenandoah, Barrenshire, acquire some of that outside right-of-way and the Veerling extension through their project. So here is a enhancement of the document that's Exhibit C, the public improvements. You can see this is a pretty large project because it also does include County Highway 83 that the county is doing. So the total investment in the area is just over $42 million. And you can see from the timeline, some of these projects are going to happen sooner than later. So Shenandoah Drive needs to be built starting at the end of this year. And the city engineer has been working with Canterbury's engineers to get that project going because it will serve the Dorn project. The 12th Avenue reconstruction, that street is in really bad shape and we've been patching it pretty aggressively. But working with the county on their project, they would like 12th Avenue done before they start construction because Barrenshire, Shenandoah, and 12th become kind of the detour around their project. So as part of the lengthy discussions about this project with the county, they kind of said, this is absolutely critical to be able to lay their concrete, which as you can see under the current project's taken quite a while. It's a much larger stretch in this section of 83 and so we need to have a way for day-to-day traffic to get around their project. So that's how it would happen. Also, SRF can talk about this, but there's some pretty large deficiencies over by Culvers and that general area. That is a high area for accidents. We've spoken with Culvers. They have a driveway right off the turn lane there. Part of the SRF contract is going to be to look at that area and how it can be reconstructed. That is not part of the County Highway project. They're leaving that up to the city to fix. So that's been our number one complaint from the large employers. Emerson, FedEx that's down there, Intrust, Data Card, that, that intersection just backs up. You have cross-traffic from the gas station and Culvers and some of the other users. So part of this project outside of the TIF district, that's why you'll note there's some funds being spent outside the TIF district, which is allowed, would pay for those improvements that have absolutely nothing to do with Canterbury, but are just things that need to happen. As the city administrator mentioned earlier, and SRF can reinforce, Canterbury, no Canterbury, 12th Avenue's got to get redone. The road bed is in very bad shape. It's a heavily used road. And with the county doing their major improvements, we can't do it afterwards, so we have to do it before their project. If you notice in the agreement, we've capped Shenandoah and Barrenshire at about $16 million. So they, those funds are, can kind of be changed depending if one comes in over or under budget, but that's their cap. And then that leaves $7 million for the Veerling Drive. Canterbury understands these projects probably will cost more than that. The overage is completely on them. So there is some right-of-way that will have to be acquired. And SRF can talk a little bit about that. That's also outside of the TIF district. They're responsible for, we're going to work with them, with some of the property owners, but they're going to ultimately be responsible for paying for that. So that's it on the numbers. You can see how it's split here between the city TIF, city other funds. We've already pledged general funds. Right now, $1.5 million to pay the county for our share of County Highway 83's improvements. We have an agreement in place. The county has 7.2 million. They have told us that probably will go up because they're seeing some cost overruns on their other project. That will impact the city general obligation of the 1.5 million. It will go up proportionally as their project goes up. County payments, you know, they could have taken the entire TIF under state statute. So after a long discussion and thanks to SRF's work, they agreed that there was about $900,000 in improvements that would have to be made to Highway 83 that they hadn't planned on, some additional turn lanes and some medians. And then one of the things SRF determined was a out-of-TIF expense was an improvement to County 83-169 on the north ramp, that we could make some changes there. So that's included. If you notice, it's kind of far out. One of the things we can talk about when we get to the TIF bonding later is we don't need to bond all of this now. That we actually can break it up into some bonds that lessens any risk to the city and will shorten the payoff period. And the county, we feel that won't need their money until actually the project starts. And the same is true with the turn lane. It's really not needed until about 2025. They did look out to 2040 because we decided as long as we're doing this, we might as well look long-term and make sure the county and we were in sync with the improvements so we didn't have to go back in in 10 years and do some additional improvements. So Canterbury TIF has set up approximately $33 million in their present value. SRF was contracted to define road deficiencies in the general area in cooperation with Scott County. They found that there's a number of road issues that exist today that without any additional development at Canterbury need to get fixed. And you'll see there are some future projects. One of them that stands out to everybody was a need for a signal on County Highway 101. There's been some near fatalities in that area. The county said it probably doesn't meet the warrants today, but somewhere down the road soon, it's probably going to meet the warrants for a traffic signal there. So they plan on asking us to pay for that. So that'll be something down the road. We will look at available funds out of the Amazon TIF and the Sanmar TIF and some other TIFs that we have that are kind of winding down to pay for that because we can take excess funds out of those TIFs to use them in other project areas. And that signal is in the Amazon TIF project area. So we will hopefully be able to pay for that. I think it's about $400,000 and SRF can talk a little bit about the timing for that. And there's a, you'll see on their schedule, there's a big ticket item way outside of the TIF district that showed up as a deficiency that the county would like us to do. We, as a staff, don't feel it's really necessary anytime in the near future. It's a right turn lane over by Lowe's. It's about $1.5 million. Has absolutely nothing to do with Canterbury, but the county's identified that as a deficiency. but the county's identified that as a deficiency. We're hoping to push that way down the road because right now there's really not a traffic issue there, and it would be very expensive because we'd have to acquire a lot of right-of-way to make that happen. So I'll turn this over to SRF, and then we'll be happy to answer questions.
Good evening. My name is Matt Pacino with SRF Consulting. Worked on the Canterbury Commons transportation areas, a wide assessment. Going to go through a few things for you here this evening, the study goals and objectives. Essentially, going back to twenty fourteen, there were a number of studies that were conducted within this area, all of which looked at different various components within the area, but none of them really took that overall comprehensive review, in addition to a lot of the newer Canterbury Commons development that's coming forward. And so that was one of the primary goals, was to kind of bring all that information into, together into one place and really start to evaluate what are the transportation needs within the system. One of the primary goals is really to identify what were those short-term needs versus what were the kind of more of that midterm and long-term needs from a transportation perspective. We wanted to identify and prioritize the improvements and the implementation and the timing of those, as well as just overall building consensus among the stakeholders. I mean, I think there's a lot of moving parts with Scott County and County Road eighty-three, the development itself, other developments. And so we wanted to make sure that we were, everyone was on the same page for what needed to be done to really make sure that this area can thrive from a transportation perspective. So just an overall process of the assessment, as I mentioned, we brought a lot of those previous studies and information from there. We wanted to leverage that as much as we could. We reestablished kind of that baseline condition and how things are operating out there, both from a traffic volume and operations perspective, from a safety perspective. And we did identify, there are some needs that are out there today regardless of anything else that's happening. Went through a pretty detailed traffic forecast assessment, looking at information that was already assumed as part of the kind of the long-range planning within the area from an assumed development perspective, leveraging information from the Scott County regional transportation travel demand model to develop those forecasts. And then we looked at, as Michael had mentioned, kind of multiple scenarios moving forward, different timeframes, your twenty twenty-five, your twenty forty, with and without development, different background growth rates. We tested lots of different scenarios to really try to hone in on what are those infrastructure needs and when are they needed. Another key component that we thought about too was, you know, knowing that there's a large event presence from Canterbury in this area, we wanted to make sure that this area continues to function for events as well. And so we looked at how vehicles will get to and from, we call that wayfinding. And so we wanted to make sure that that's going to continue to function well, or even if we can improve upon that from its current situation. So we brought some information for that forward as part of the assessment as well. And as I mentioned, the project phasing and prioritization components already. From a stakeholder coordination perspective, we started this study probably back in mid-March, and we convened a study review committee, continuing with the city, Scott County, and Canterbury representatives. So as I mentioned, one of those goals is really to make sure, this is a pretty fast-paced study, a lot of information, a lot of assumptions, a lot of changes. And so we wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page throughout the process. We met pretty regularly, about every two to three weeks since mid-April, to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're all going down the same road, pun intended. So what did we find from our assessment? As we alluded to, there's generally about fifteen different infrastructure improvements that were identified. They ranged just from general roadway configurations, so do you need a two-lane, a three-lane, four-lane, et cetera, for the type of roadway facility? We looked at different traffic control types, whether it's different types of stop conditions, a side-street stop versus an always-stop, signals, roundabouts. We evaluated multiple different configurations. And we also looked at access management. A lot of that's primarily tied to County Road eighty-three, what those access points look like. Are they full access? Are they partial access? Is it a three-quarter, right-in, right-out? Or are access closures in play? And we tried to set up the guidelines such that we'd set it up for future development as well. And so that's why some of the key things that we thought about from an overall infrastructure perspective. So as I mentioned, you know, there's about fifteen key improvements that we identified. Some are needed, you know, to address existing conditions, some address kind of just general growth in the area, some are related to the Canterbury Commons development, et cetera. So we looked at it from a construction timeline on these different improvements. Are they needed under existing twenty twenty-five, twenty forty? We were mindful of the Canterbury access considerations and how the timeline of construction can impact access to Canterbury during different types of events and their busy season. And then there's also a number of improvements that we're really, we're, we'll deem them as flexible improvements, so they can be a little bit more development-driven timeline, or as funding becomes available, they're necessarily more, maybe more of a safety improvement that could be addressed, but not, there may not be a safety problem there today, but it would just be something that the city could have a little bit of flexibility on. As Michael had mentioned, we summarized that into kind of two different buckets, I'll say. We developed cost estimates, and we wanted to make sure that we're TIF eligible projects. And so we identified, of those fifteen overall infrastructure projects, a number of them were tied to the Canterbury Commons projects. I won't go into each individual project, but generally that kind of just lays out how, you know, the cost for each individual project and the approximate timeline and when those would be needed. And then there's a number of those existing projects and future projects that we identified that are separate from Canterbury itself, whether it's an existing issue or something that will, would happen into the future, a future need regardless of the development. And so we lumped those into another category as well. So I know that's a pretty high overview. If we wanted to get into more specifics on any of the projects themselves, we can do that, but otherwise I would open it up for any questions or comments.
Questions of staff or consultant?
Mr. President, I do. Where do you see the biggest impact of traffic from the development of Canterbury alone?
Mr. Mayor, council members, from a development perspective, I think the biggest or most critical intersection in the entire transportation system really is the County Road eighty-three and Twelfth Avenue intersection. That intersection really is, for lack of a better term, a choke point within there. That's where a lot of the vehicles wanting, are ultimately want to be destined to, or at least that's where they currently are. And so a lot of the improvements and wayfinding things were really designed such that, to relieve as much pressure from that intersection as we can. So to moving Barrenshire Boulevard further north, tying that opposite of Valley Industrial, making that the primary gateway to Canterbury. That really provides a lot of relief to that Twelfth and lets vehicles or motorists as they're entering Canterbury leverage one oh one a little bit more. I mean, we're just talking about incremental tweaks, but every little bit helps when you get to an intersection that's getting that close to capacity. Some other things that we really wanted to do is the Veerling, making access to Eagle Creek a little bit more attractive. There's certainly signage that's there today, but we want to maybe emphasize that a little bit more as well. So those are kind of, that's the key intersection, that Twelfth Avenue and County Road eighty-three intersection for the biggest need.
Follow-up.
Go ahead.
And then as this gets, if this gets approved and gets built out, Barrenshire Drive is going to become even a more important outlet or inlet for this. Do you think that'll disperse traffic better because Twel-, you know, because Twelfth Avenue, the eighty-three is a main entrance, Veerling, but you're allowing, now enhancing even a third entrance as well?
Correct, Mr. Mayor, council members. That Barrenshire connection is going to provide a lot of benefit. I think it's designed so that particularly during event conditions, it's designed to be flexible, so kind of counterflow lanes where you can reverse lanes to handle different traffic volumes. And as I mentioned, it's kind of more centrally located between one sixty-nine and Highway one oh one. And so what that does is that helps, makes both those options a little bit more attractive as a lot of the users of Canterbury are ultimately destined back towards the east, kind of hard, towards the heart of the metro.
Anybody else? Well, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, as I see it, you're going to have four major inlets and outlets to this property, correct? You're going to have Shenandoah, Barrenshire, Twelfth, and Veerling, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And there'll be different varying capacities of what is defined as a major, but those are kind of the four primary arterials serving the area.
Okay. Yeah, and from what I see here, if you could pull the map back up, I'd appreciate it. You know, it's going to be educating the public on events and other things, you know, like you say, wayfarers, signage, you know, they're, once you get them taught, I guess you would say, which is the easiest, or they find what they like the best or prefer, I think this could work very smoothly. It's going to be a, you know, it's like a new roundabout. It's going to be a learning experience.
Mr. Whiting?
You know, we have set aside ten million dollars for not only the Twelfth Avenue, the Eagle Creek Veerling Roundabout, the internal roundabout, and also the funds for eighty-three. When the general public goes out to Twelfth Avenue, I think they understand that that intersection is cumbersome and could be an issue. But when they look at the rest of Twelfth Avenue, a four-lane, I don't know that they understand that there is some deficiencies on that road, so a full construction is going to be needed. You know, I'm not the engineer type, but if I go out there and look at it, I don't see that the need is there, but from what I'm told from staff, it is. Is there any study that your group had done on that to verify that?
Well, I think there's, you know, from an infrastructure perspective, I can't speak to the, what's below the ground, and I think there's some key things there. But from an above-ground perspective, with the County Road eighty-three improvement, there's some additional turn lanes, particularly northbound dual-lefs that are being proposed. And right now, in the westbound direction, there's some varying widths of Twelfth Avenue is. And so at a minimum, there's some benefits to creating a more cohesive or basically a full four-lane facility for the entire length. Right now, it's kind of a combination of two lanes in one direction and one in the other for various pieces of it.
Steve, did you want to add anything to that?
I'm sure, Mayor and council members, the road is in pretty tough shape. It, right now, if we did not have Canterbury, we would have to go out there and do a full-depth reconstruction. We could preserve the concrete curb and gutter if there were no other improvements. But as Matt indicated, we're looking at adding turn lanes, adding medians, so the curb won't be able to be left in place. We'll have to have widening, so, and we look at it, we look at it as a semi-widening slash reconstruction of the project. We'll preserve as much of the subgrade as we can, but it is basically a full reconstruction of that roadway based on the improvements that we're looking at.
And I think, if I may continue, I think as that area has developed with the apartment or the hotels and things, some of those uses have changed from the initial concept, and that Twelfth Avenue's been in there quite a while. So I, after thinking about it, I can understand that there definitely needs to be some improvements along there.
Kenny?
I think it's over, maybe overwhelming for the people outside in the public to see this, but I think this is something that we would maybe see, thinking we would see back. Could you go back to the wider map of the bigger area here?
Does this one work for you?
I think it's one more, or the...
Let's see.
Right, the red and yellow, green.
There you go.
There you go. Because I'm looking at some of these intersections and I'm looking at some of the fatality or the injuries. I noticed that, like, one of them is still green, one is yellow, the other one is the one oh one that you pointed out. But is there any others that you saw within that, that crash injury that are maybe coated green but are potential?
From a, from a safety perspective, I think I want to understand your question. Are there any other locations that are...
Right, that, without doing these improvements, what would, what would happen to this area with this development?
From a safety perspective, as traffic volumes increase, you know, we would expect the rate of crashes to kind of proportionally increase. And so the areas that are experiencing crashes today, we'd expect that to more or less continue if nothing else happened except for increasing volumes. Some of the locations that are kind of in that yellow category that are, you know, they're maybe more than average but not so much more than, that maybe warrants further consideration from an improvement perspective, as traffic volumes increase, those might be some locations that might warrant some additional improvements. Now that said, some of the improvements that we identified as part of the project, particularly potentially a four-lane to three-lane restriping on Eagle Creek Boulevard, that's one that would potentially help improve multiple intersections even regardless of if there's an issue there or not.
And then, if I may, and now the yellow from the one oh one through County Road eighty-three of four dots, is that before the construction or with the new? Because now it is under construction.
Correct. That is, that is based on historical crash information, and so we understand that that's being constructed now.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear for everyone, so.
All right, I'll ask a couple of questions now. The first question I have is, the seven point two million that the county has set aside for eighty-three, that money was set aside for improvements needed prior to this development being proposed. Do we know what the impacts are above and beyond that with this development?
Mayor and council members, I'm probably best to answer that. So the current estimates for the County Highway eighty-three project, and this is an estimate that the county has provided recently, it includes engineering and administration right-of-way costs. It's upward of over eleven million dollars. So we know that some of these items, like the County Highway eighty-three project are placeholders. Their project includes a little more, a larger scope than what we're looking at as far as the estimates on, for the public improvements part of it. So as far as the contribution and, and distribution pertaining to the TIF and the city and the county and the federal funding, that are all piece of the funding scenario for this project, we do know that we need to work in more detail with the county. This isn't, these numbers for that County Highway eighty-three project, as well as all of these numbers, are pretty, pretty high-level estimates. I would say that most of the projects in here, we do have a large enough estimate in it. The estimate for County Highway eighty-three, like I indicated, is probably one of the underestimated projects, but that's based off of a lot of different factors that the county has brought into it with their estimating, most notably the right-of-way acquisition part of it. So I think I beat around your question a little bit, so if you could repeat that?
Well, no, actually, you didn't, because I pointed out that the seven point two that the county has for eighty-three was prior to this development. We all, we received a letter prior to us approving this last time from the county, and I, talking to the county commissioners, they wanted to make sure that any needs because of the development above what they already had planned, they could discuss using TIF dollars from the project for that share. That didn't turn out to be the case. So now we have seven point two plus our contribution, which is not TIF dollars, of one point five, for a total of eight point seven. You just told me it's going to be over eleven million, so there's a shortfall there of a couple of million. The tip, the county is not receiving any TIF dollars off this project, or county taxes for twenty-five years. So the difference in that is coming from where?
Mayor and council members, so if you look in the far-left column, boy, Matt, could you go back to the Exhibit C a little further, right there? So the County Highway eighty-three project, if you look in the preliminary cost column, the cost that we have estimated with the traffic study that SRF worked on is actually the eight point eight six million plus the nine hundred million, so it's about nine point seven, just under ten million dollars. So when we did the estimating, the county was doing their independent estimating with their new consultant. They've hired a different consultant to do the County Highway eighty-three project, and the county has done their own estimating on it, again, taking in a few of the other costs that we haven't included in here, such as very substantial right-of-way needs. So we have identified, if you go to the right, there's city other funds, so that would be one point five eight four, and that one point five million was based off of preliminary discussions with the county before they updated their estimates. We know that that amount right now, as Mr. Kurski indicated earlier, is most likely going to be a little more on the city's funding portion of it. And then going to the right, there's the nine hundred thousand dollars of the county TIF that would come from the TIF to pay for a portion of the project, and then other funds. We have federal funding, which is between six and seven million dollars, and then the balance out of all of that would come from the county. And then... Um, and then I should also indicate, um, on the Barronshire construction, there's seven point two million dollars for that project. Now, included in the seven point two, this, this gets convoluted, I have it right in my head. But part of the Barronshire project includes right-of-way acquisition out because it touches County Highway eighty-three. So, some of the costs for County Highway eighty-three that the county is estimating is actually in the, which we have here in the Barronshire project. So, um, and then, you know, also our 12th Avenue project touches County Road eighty-three. So, they're looking at the construction limits a little differently than we did here. Um, so the bottom line here is, uh, we need to work a lot more with the county to finalize, um, the funding scenario for County Highway eighty-three. But right now, it's, it's a eleven-plus million-dollar project that we're looking at, and, uh, the, the TIF should be pretty set at nine hundred thousand dollars for the changes that Matt talked about. Um, the, the part that's gonna influx up a little bit will be that one point five-eight-four. We expect that to go a little bit higher.
And that essentially would be for right-of-way acquisition?
Correct, yep.
The, uh, next question I have, and I'll get to Mr. Lewis, the slide that you had showing the phasing, I see a phase one, a phase two, and a phase three, and I'm, I'm not sure where eighty-three fits into that. Is it phase four? We, we already kind of discussed the importance of 12th Avenue and eighty-three.
Correct. County Road eighty-three would be a twenty-twenty-one project. Um, the phasing is more intended to be in, in kind of the general order of the internal roadways, whether it's between Shenandoah, 12th, and Barronshire, and how you kind of phase those, uh, that construction to make sure that Canterbury, um, has, has adequate access during the construction. So, um, and trying to minimize those types of impacts.
So, the answer to my question was?
Twenty, County Road eighty-three is planned for year twenty-twenty-one.
All of the counties or just the access points where Barronshire and 12th Avenue connect?
Uh, mayor and council members, it, so, all of County Highway eighty-three, the, their federal project that is scheduled, their main project is scheduled for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
Now, as Matt indicated, that, so internally, um, phase one is really phase one that is needed, uh, for the potential Doran project that is, that is approved there. That's phase one in Canterbury's thinking to their internal roadways. Um, phase two, the city will be doing 12th Avenue and the roundabout at Veerling and 12th Avenue. That's a phase two, but they're ha- happening semi-simultaneously. And, um, so over twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen, those projects will be going. And then the phase three internal would be Barronshire, really all getting that done before the county does their project on eighty-three.
When you say Eagle Creek and, and Veerling, uh, where does, to the east of Shenandoah extended to 12th Avenue, 12th Avenue over to eighty-three, that, it says phase two on our, it says phase two on our map.
So, the roundabout, I, I meant to say if I didn't do, um, Veerling, 12th, and Shenandoah, that roundabout, project number fourteen there, that will be packaged with the phase-two 12th Avenue project. Um, and that's what was approved earlier for SRF to commence the design on would be project fourteen and project ten.
Okay.
If that?
I think that, Mr. President, I think that phase one and two, pretty close together, followed by phase three, and a majority of that would be done, obviously, phase one would be done, phase two. And then they do eighty-three, because that includes the Barronshire, uh, roundabout there, and then the 12th Avenue, we take care of the city's, city side on both the east and the west. And I don't know how the county's gonna proceed if they're gonna go from south to north or north to south, but...
What's, what's confusing me, I guess, maybe is the color of your flexible on this map, because you're showing flexible from 12th Avenue where the new Shenandoah meets up at the, just to the left of the ten. And you're showing it gray all the way down to existing, existing Eagle Creek. Okay? So you're showing all, all the gray on here that says flexible includes from the roundabout where Shenandoah Extended meets up with 12th Avenue, right there. Flexible is south now, all the way to e- right there, eh, right? So that's a flexible. That's not in phase one, phase two, or phase three. That's just kind of out there somewhere. Am I reading this right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
If, if I can add a comment to it, we, we would, right now, that's a four-lane roadway. Um, so, so right now, so switch to the intersection, project number four. On an operation, uh, point of view, we don't need anything done. It's, it's a always-stop, four lanes coming in every direction. So, operation-wise, we don't need anything at that intersection. But that had a red dot that we talked about earlier. It has a critical crash rate that's, that's high. So, we know that there's a, more traffic at that intersection. We need to have a better right-of-way definition for traffic. Um, so what we wanna do is, um, after we get to phase one and phase two and phase three in the County Road eighty-three project, and we better understand where the traffic is going to go, we modeled at this point. Um, everything's just modeled. Uh, it's not an exact science. But when we do, before we build the roundabout, project number four on Eagle Creek Boulevard and Veerling, um, we want to recalibrate, and before we build that roundabout, um, we, we wanna look a little closer at what the traffic has done with these first projects. And then we will program that little segment of Veerling between the two roundabouts, um, with the roundabout at Eagle Creek and Veerling. So it is gray, and it's, it's meant to be flexible, but we would expect to program that little segment with project number four.
Will that cost be included in the TIF district, or is that a city cost?
Um, project number four and that, and that flexible, um, portion would be a TIF cost.
Okay.
Mr. Luci, had your hand up?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Uh, the right-of-way acqu- acquisition, uh, the majority, if not all of that, is gonna be coming from Canterbury. Am I not, uh, correct on that?
Um, that, that is correct for, uh, a lot of the internal Canterbury roadways. Um, Canterbury may need to dedicate additional right-of-way for the, for the project number ten, the 12th Avenue project, and we'll be working with the county on what is needed for the, uh, County Highway eighty-three project, as well as that new connection of Barronshire, which, which ha- as we have it laid out, crosses private property right now. So, we'll have to work with pri- uh, property owners on the acquisition of, of, uh, mainly what's needed for Barronshire and eighty-three at, at, in those areas.
But, uh, from my understanding and some discussions I've had with some people, that, um, the only place you can get right-of-way on eighty-three is on the west side, which is Canterbury. The east side is pretty much tied up with businesses that, you know, will be very detrimentally affected with giving away any land.
Especially near 12th Avenue, correct?
Yeah. Okay. And I'm guessing Canterbury is, uh, easy to work with on this, uh, right-of-way, uh, acquisition?
You could ask Randy right there. He'd be, he'd love to tell you. Members, um, if you, this is before my time, but they gave fifty feet of right-of-way. It's expected that the county is probably gonna ask for another fifty feet, and they will negotiate with the county some other access points. The County Workforce Center, there's some, the county would like to close that access point, but they need Canterbury's cooperation to do that. So I think, between the county and Canterbury, that's for them to work out. As Mr. Lilahog mentioned, the biggest acquisition cost really is up here. If I can get over here, um, at a piece that Sanmar currently owns. So we actually chatted with them the other day, and there's some potential, um, they're landlocked here. And so, I think they're gonna be willing to work with us, but we're still gonna have to acquire, um, a chunk that own a par- a separate parcel right there, that they don't have any development plans for, and that's exactly where that road goes through. So there will be some money that Canterbury's gonna have to spend to acquire that. And then, the county, it's not resolved yet. As Mr. Lilahog mentioned, there's either a single or dual left turn on the Barronshire, depending on which traffic model you look at. That does have some impact on the abutting property owners. And so, if it's a single lane, they probably have enough right-of-way today. If it's a double lane, Canterbury would have to pay for some additional right-of-way.
Go ahead.
The intersection that you were just talking there about Sanmar, is that roadway going to be right on the property line? Cause you got, uh, the abutting property there. I believe that's, um, got some agreement already with, uh, Canterbury?
So, Mr. President and board members, so, this is just a line in the paper right now, cause there's also a big drainage ditch here, but the plan is to basically confine this unto the small parcel that Sanmar currently owns.
Okay.
And then you can see on the gray plan, if we go back to the... This still has to be worked out, how we, they would get, cause the county would like to close all of these access points, including their own property. And you can see there's kind of an outline of a baggage road that goes through here and into this property to provide it some additional access. So, Canterbury owns some of this, the county owns some of this, so they're gonna have to do some land-swapping in here to make this work, and the county is well aware of that.
So am I, cause I checked on the GIS map, and I know who owns what.
Further questions? I've got questions regarding the actual development agree- uh, agreement contract. I guess that would be for staff. I read all of this, and there's a lot of inconsistencies, so I, I wanna make sure I understand this. We're gonna sell ten million dollars for the GO bonds. The developer is gonna put up roughly twenty-three in a TIF note?
So, board member and, uh, Mr. President, so, if you remember, we've done all these TIF agreements. So they get a note, which basically pledges the revenue besides ours to pay that note back. Then they go to a bank, basically have to borrow that twenty-three million, and the bank, with some additional credit probably from them, will take the TIF revenue. So it goes to the county, comes to the city, and then we pay them, I believe, twice a year. And so that lender would get those payments.
So, future taxes are gonna pay the ten million dollar GO bonds back that the city, uh, issued?
Correct.
And they're gonna pay the twenty-three million back?
Correct.
Okay. And then somewhere else in here, it talks about, which is basically a hundred percent of all the infrastructure. Somewhere it talks about inter-fund loans, fund balances, and anything else will be used at our disposal to make these payments back to them or something, if the TIF isn't there. What, what, what was I reading about using inter-fund loans and, uh, fund balances?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, board members, uh, I believe that would talk about if the TIF, if the TIF-generated revenue wasn't sufficient enough, we would borrow, could borrow internally to make our bond payments. And then as the TIF revenue ra- ramped up, or if future TIF increment came in, we would repay ourselves those, those dollars first. And so we would be able to shore ourselves up on any bond payments through other funds that are available within the city. And then future increment, um, if it's substantial enough, would cover, would then be reimbursing those costs that we borrowed from internally, if that was the case.
And, and the priority is the GO bonds getting paid first?
Absolutely. They're the first, they're the first thing in the, any payments to, um, Canterbury or their, their lender would be, um, in second position of any increment coming in.
And, and Mr. President, because of the way the state tax structure is, um, you know, commercial, because of the, um, state commercial tax and then the fiscal disparities, it's actually the resident, residential that generates a significant amount of the TIF revenue. And Mr. Doran's here, but s- if and when this gets approved, they're prepared to start construction, and we have set up the bonds so that they would be sold late in twenty-nineteen, excuse me. And it probably won't be the ten million, it'll be less, because we're not gonna pay the county for a while. We'll do a, a smaller bond issuance to save on interest costs. And then, the payments to them will be delayed until the Doran project comes online and actually starts paying TIFs. So that'll be about eighteen to twenty-four months before it actually hits the tax roll. So, in, um, Springstead's analysis, they calculated that in, so the city's kind of not out of pocket. They're basically delaying those payments so that when the bondholders buy them, they understand they're not getting any money upfront, that they're gonna have to wait until they get paid back.
The only cautionary note I would say is, it seems the interest rates are rising. So if we're gonna bond some and then bond some more later, the later interest might actually be higher than the current rate.
And, Mr. President and board members, we had a discussion today with, um, Mr. Dunaway from Springstead. You know, if you remember, the thirty-three million includes no, um, inflation. And as we all know, the county, when they reassess property, the values go up. So, at some point down the road, the TIF will accelerate because of that. And so we will build into the bond provision an early call, so they can be paid off actually early if the revenue comes in ahead of their very conservative projections. So they, when they did the analysis, probably, um, first analysis on the Doran project, they used what they thought was a loan number on value that the county's using. Since they've done that, I think the value the county's using on apartments has gone up fifty thousand dollars a unit. So, that there alone is gonna kind of accelerate the TIF payment, and hence eventually the bond payments.
Mr. Luci?
You were saying that the GO bonds have priority. That's priority just at the repayment rate. That's not total priority before any of Canterbury's TIF funds, or the money they borrow.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, uh, Councilor Luci, I, that is, our TIF payment, bond payments are priority number one on that. So, Canterbury, if there's, our bond payment is six hundred thousand dollars, and only six hundred thousand dollars is generated in TIF, all of that goes to the city that, and there's no payment then left over to go to, towards Canterbury.
Okay, I'm gonna restate my question now.
I'm sorry.
Um, no, that's fine. Um, say it comes in at one point two million, and their bond payment is six hundred. So half of that goes to our GO bond, the other half goes to them?
Right, correct, correct.
Okay, so not, we're not gonna pay the GO bond off before anything else, it's gonna be paid off simultaneously?
Correct. Uh, we, we would levy, we would take a hundred and five percent of our principal and interest payment for that year, um, and then anything left over then is, uh, would go towards Canterbury. So we make sure that we have a little bit extra sitting, sitting in our coffers in case something comes up a little bit short, and that's actually a statutory requirement. So that we would take, if our bond payment's six hundred thousand, we're gonna take a hundred and five percent of that amount from any TIF proceeds that come in, send them the remainder. So they get, you know, what would be thirty, thirty thousand dollars more on that six hundred thousand.
Build the escrow.
However, if they, if there's not enough TIF dollars coming off the property, and we make our bond payments, and there's nothing left for the developer, that doesn't mean the developer's just left empty-handed. That just means they're gonna have to wait until there's enough development there to, to get repaid.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
So that's why there's the note. So that note carries, I think, a statutory interest of five or six percent. So they're not getting paid, they're accruing that five or six percent. So, one of the things that might happen, depending on how the development occurs here, the city bonds actually may be paid off early, but because they didn't get money early on, it might be the full twenty-seven years, because once we're paid off, the rest of that revenue goes to them to pay their note down.
And the developer is still, I mean, they're still financing this as well, too. They're still required to pay their lenders' principal and interest payments. They're just not getting, it wouldn't be from our funds, it'd be from, from their own funds.
They're getting reimbursed the interest from the TIF generated.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
They're getting the interest on their financing from the TIF.
Well, yes and no. If there's no, if there's no increment remaining at the, after one payment, they still have to make their payments to their lender.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if they're carrying these costs at five percent, they're allowed to collect that five percent carrying cost from the TIF.
Yep, yep, correct.
So it's not like they're losing that interest that they're paying.
No, but there, it's a cash flow deal, too, though.
Right. Go ahead.
So, um, thank you, Mr. President. So, I'm risk adverse, and the, the money for the bonds is all going towards public infrastructures, is that correct?
Mr. President and board members, yes. This is a, unlike some other TIFs have been done, a hundred percent of this is going into public infrastructure.
And then, um, I think actually when we talk about the financing and stuff, it's actually one of the points we've been driving about is if we can get a triple-A track, tax rating, and, uh, maybe save some money in the bonding expense of, of, of a bond situation on this, which would be great. Um, in here, if... In here, if there was, I'm reading pretty hard that if the developer doesn't develop Shenandoah and Burnshire, that if they defaulted, then they would give up the ability to appeal assessments, right? And we could assess that cost back to the developer, to the landowner?
Mr. President and Board Members, the way this kind, this is not your typical assessment deal. So if anything goes awry, and we all know, for instance, Shenandoah has got to get built because that's the sort of that building, whatever that cost is gets attached to their property and they have to pay for it. And the other thing that was built in is, this is a redevelopment TIF. And let's say this area down here, in four years, that's a statutory requirement, they have to have this redevelopment occur. The city would have the right to come in and substitute a different developer to get the project going. So we wanted to make sure there was enough protection for the city that this thing actually happens and nothing is ever at jeopardy. So the developer, the property owner agreed that for whatever reason Canterbury can't fulfill their needs, either city leans their property to get paid back and on the redevelopment side, the city has an opportunity to go in and substitute a new developer.
Mr. Lewis?
You were talking assessments along 12th Avenue there. There's a number of other companies that reside on the south side. Is there going to be any assessments?
Mr. President and Board Members, no. So 12th Avenue, that's why we kind of separated these projects out. That's getting paid out of the increment as Mr. Nelson mentioned first. And one of our concerns was if that was done a typical way, 30% would be paid by those property owners, 70% would come out of the general taxpayer fund. The way it's set up right now, 100% is being paid by the TIF, because we were concerned some of those businesses, that kind of hit would basically jeopardize their business model.
Okay. The first part of Dorn's development, Phase 1, is that set to be able to pay this GO bond?
Mr. President?
Without Phase 2?
Mr. President and Member Lewis, so the first phase is actually two pieces. It's their clubhouse and the first 300 units. And we come up about, and Mr. Dunaway can address this, about $186,000 short. However, based on their calculations today, you only need, I think it was about $10 million in commercial development to make up that difference. And we've been working pretty closely with Canterbury. Some of those corporate headquarters are kind of waiting on the decision tonight before they'll sign on the dotted line. And some of them are some pretty significant investment, which would cover ours and Canterbury's share of the TIF.
Go ahead.
You know, a little openness on, or transparency would go a long way to, you know, as far as not having to know the companies, but some of this information would be beneficial upfront. That, you know, that we know that, you know, whether they got 20%, 30%, whatever, that's waiting just for this decision. And, you know, tomorrow if this goes their way, they'll be signing.
Mr. President and Board Members, one of these companies has been working with Canterbury for probably seven or eight months. And we know that this is the only site they're looking at. But they need to know this project's going to happen before they go and invest. I think the first phase is 20 to 40 million dollars and there's a second phase after that. And I think we're pretty comfortable on that. I think the other thing that covers a lot of the TIF is down here, there's a townhouse project and a senior project. Canterbury's been in some pretty long negotiations on the townhouse portion of getting that project built. So that's not included in those revenue numbers. As I said, residential generates a significant amount of TIF revenue. So if you add in even the first phase of those townhouses, the city's pretty well covered.
And Mr. Kurski, even if we, the value too of the, of the apartment, of the units as well, too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. So the other thing that we found today was Springstead's very conservative. And so they used a fairly low number, because that's a year ago when they started doing these numbers, that's what kind of the county was. Since that's happened, as I said, the values have gone up about $50,000 a unit. That would probably close the gap pretty quickly, because there are other TIF runs, they're using a number that's close to $200,000 a unit. And on this project, they were, I think, 130. So there's a pretty big spread there that will have a pretty positive impact to the TIF.
One more.
I have no doubts that Phase 2 of the Dorn project will be in line as soon as they get the finishing touches on Phase 1. Because what I've seen, I went to their Maple Grove grand opening and saw some of their units, talked to some of their tenants. And, you know, they just rave about it up there. I think it's something sorely needed here. I think some of our bigger companies, EnTrust, Datacard, Emerson, I don't want to leave anybody out, but I'm just naming a couple of the big ones. They're, they've been long awaiting something as that housing. And hopefully, you know, it'll go as quick as they do. And the senior housing there, I think as soon as they could get the shovel in the ground and get the documents signed, that would rent or sell or lease, however it's going to be done, very quickly. So I'm quite confident that this is going to pay off its TIF. I have some concerns, but, you know, like I say, a little more transparency with some of us would go a long way. But thank you for everything.
Sounds like a motion.
Any other questions of staff? What's the wishes of the body? Mr. Myers?
Mr. President, then, if I'd offer a motion to approve a contract for private development for Canterbury by adopting Resolution E 2018-015.
Is there a second?
I'll do her.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Myers?
I just think this is a big infrastructure project. We have a, Canterbury's been around for a long time with no development. What is drastically different here is we have a stake in the ground with a developer that's ready to go in a needed product in our market. I do believe in the next year that we will see other major stakeholders, townhomes, possibly their corporate headquarters with a lot of jobs, high-paying jobs. I think for our community, this, we've had a lot of TIF districts, none of them have failed. And I don't think this one will either.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, one, one real concern I have is that, you know, trees being involved in this. I mean, that, that to me is a developer's choice. You know, I know we have some tree ordinances and stuff like that, but I would really like to see that left out of this thing.
Mr. Whiting?
No, I think this project has been talked about for, well, very different variations for many years. It's finally, it's finally come in front of us. I congratulate Mr. Sampson and thank Mr. Dorn for putting this project forward. And I want to mention Darren coming in on his vacation. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. So I'm all for it and excited to see this move forward.
I'll weigh my two cents. And the, I look at things from a different perspective. Earlier tonight, on consent, we passed a final plat for a middle-income, single-family residential plat. One of the requirements in that plat was 105% of the infrastructure cost and a letter of security be placed up front. That's, that's what we're doing to our regular middle-income housing. On a project like this, we're hearing luxury, upscale, and we're pretty much foregoing any infrastructure cost and basically putting it on future taxes of the property, which means for the next 25 years, any city services, county services, or school services to this site will be funded by everybody else. You know, you can ask if it's fair or not or whatever, and I'm just not a fan of government manipulating the private markets. So with that, let's just call a question and have the vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Myself. Motion passes four to one. Item number 4B, Administrative Amendment to Canterbury TIF Plan. Mr. Kurski?
Mr. President and Board Members, so we are required to respond to folks' comments on the TIF plan. The only comment we received was from the county that said they wanted to include in the current value any building permits for the last 18 months. So we provided the information to them and the numbers will be adjusted from the county's side to include the value, the present value of any permits that were taken out over the last 18 months to set the floor of the TIF. The other thing is that it allows, is one of the TIFs to be able to issue bonds. Those were the two administrative changes.
Mr. Myers?
Mr. President, so you're saying that the building permits are included up to present value? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. President and Members, so let's just say the project was valued at $30 million today. If they had done $250,000 in building permits, that's going to be added into the floor value for the
To the floor value.
School district, city, county.
The valuation of the property prior to the project.
Prior, prior to the project.
Yeah, that'll actually generate more taxes for the city a little bit.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative amendment by adopting Resolution Number E 2018-014.
Mr. Mokel seconded the motion? Am I correct?
Yes.
Any other questions on the motion? Mr. Lewis?
You know, the one question I had, and I tried checking this out and I still waiting for the answer back, which is going to be too late. But retroactively doing something like this, I'm sure it's legal, otherwise staff wouldn't be putting it forward. I'm just wondering how common this is and, you know, what, what kind of rules do we have to follow on this?
So, Mr. President and Board Members, that's why you're doing this amendment to the TIF plan. So the county has a right to either ask for the whole TIF and other things. One of the things they asked for was this be done. So if you remember, you all approved the actual TIF maybe six months ago. They wanted to make sure that prior to tonight, any building permits that they hadn't seen yet, because they're about a year behind, were incorporated. That's pretty common.
Okay. How many permits have, over the last 18 months on the site?
Mr. President, it wasn't very much. There was the food court basically at Canterbury that was included.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 5A, bill list. Any questions on the bill list?
Mr. President?
Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the EDA bill list. Oh, is there a question? Oh, sorry.
At the last EDA meeting, we had made a determination that the bill list would be reports only, Councilman. So if you have questions, we can address those, but if not, they're just for general knowledge.
Mr. Lewis?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM. I'll second that. Mr. President?
All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. Mr. Lewis?
Short recess.
Second. Let's put a time on that.
Go ahead, you can. How much does it take to burn one?
10, 10 minutes.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Recession for 10 minutes. Sorry.
Depends if there's some time-
An option.
They're callable at a premium, maybe we can get to par and be good in, you know, a lot of it, like the timing, are they fifteen years, are you into it? If you're a bond investor, you, you know, you're worried about your, your principal and your interest is important too, but if you have a really good bond with a great rate, maybe not in today's market, but years ago, and you didn't want to buy a bond with a call feature because it took it away from you, and, but it can save, in this case, our community some money.
So, so Mayor and Council, we'll be back to you once we get the final numbers and what the exact amount will be.
Counselor Whiting.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-2018-093, authorizing issuance of ten million, five-hundred thousand dollars in general obligation TIF bonds for public improvements adjacent to Canterbury Park.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one, thank you. Moving ahead to nine eight-two, contract for private development with Canterbury. Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and Council, again, this is the identical contract that the EDA had.
Questions of staff? If not, thank you. Counselor Whiting.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-2018-091, a contract for private development, Canterbury.
I have a motion, a second, by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion? Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I guess I missed a spot here. I had some questions before on, you know, it's been estimated that the property sale is probably going to cover the barn relocation and removal out there, and I've done some in checking with the county and seeing what the property sales in the area around here are going, and, you know, unless a good share of that sells for below market rate, which is, you know, just shy of two-hundred thousand an acre, you know, the ones there at their gateway entrance, the bank up by Hy-Vee just paid just shy of a million dollars an acre. So, I mean, I'm guessing the gateway out there is probably going to be there a little more, so, you know, I, I think there's going to be plenty of money to be made on the Canterbury side. I know they're putting a lot of work into it and they put, you know, a number of plans, but, you know, I just wanted to point out to people that it's not, you know, they're, they're not behind the eight ball totally. I mean, when they sell that corner, I think they're going to come out pretty good.
Other discussion? Counselor Lehman?
This is one case where we have to have success. It's in everybody's best interest that this project is successful. Don't, don't take nothing short of that.
No. To the best and highest use, very successful, you know, four-hundred million dollars. I'm interested in the jobs, not only the apartment building, but actually the, you know, watching Canterbury and not develop and everything go around it, the opportunity to, to see this infill and develop and for the betterment of our community, it has a lot of, it has so much potential, and I think this will be the beginning of unlocking that. I think this will be highly successful, and the jobs too. Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I don't think the, the apartment's going to produce that many jobs. I mean, they're, they're probably going to have twenty jobs there, you know.
It'll produce a lot of value, though.
The value will be there, the jobs won't be, but hopefully the corporate offices and the headquarters and things like that are going to bring, bring high-paying jobs to the area, and then they can go live in the, the brand-new building, too.
Yep. Counselor Whiting?
You know, another aspect that people don't think about is, you know, a lot of the apartments will be filled with people that maybe work here already but live somewhere else or from moving into town, but I think a lot of those apartments will be filled with people that want to change and, and move, so when people talk about affordable housing, to get some of that housing moving and shifting, this is an opportunity, building apartments and building other places for people's needs in their life cycle, we'll, we'll move some of those lower-value houses to make some more affordable housing, and I think this is the natural way to do it.
Counselor Luce?
Yeah, when I was up at Maple Grove's ribbon-cutting, I, Mr. Dorn set me up with about ten of his residents, and they were all retired. They had all tried out other places, and they got here and they couldn't say enough good about the place. They just raved about it. They said they had wished they had done it the first time around. So, I, like you said, I think, you know, we're going to get local seniors that are going to take a look at this, and I've told a few of them to make the trek to Maple Grove and check it out, because when this is built, that will be the place to live, and, you know, the backfill on their homes that they vacate, you know, and like you say, that's more affordable, the, the, the homes that are there now and established are way more affordable than the new, new homes, the new homes with the land value alone, they can't build anything for under three-hundred thousand.
Right.
That, that's not entry level in my book. I mean, so I, I, hopefully this will run the gamut all the way around, throughout society, and, you know, it, I can only hope that it does what everybody thinks it's going to do.
Good. Motion on the table, a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Four to one. Thank you very much. Let's move ahead then to nine eight-three, bonding authority for tax increment bonds, and Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and Council, this is not actually selling the bonds, this, we're required to actually have this pass so that, Mr. Littlehog, we can start moving forward on the road design. So, as I said earlier, we'll be back to you with a bond package at a later date, sometime probably in 2019, once we get them underwritten, and Darren and I talked today, there is some benefit to actually changing the tranche from over ten million to under ten million, because there are private funds out there and companies that do business in this community that might buy those bonds without having to do a full offering, so we'll be back to you with details.
Questions of staff? I have one. So, we wouldn't know how long, we, these bonds would be twenty, thirty years?
Mayor and Council, right now, it's projected, I think it was twenty-five or twenty-six years to, to match the TIF.
Another question is, are we going to ask or ask, we're the issuer, we should demand a call feature?
Yep. And, Mayor and Council, we talked about that today, there, and with Springstead, we're not sure what that will be. We'll have to wait to look at the financials, but it'll probably be around year ten or shortly after in case the revenue comes in really strong and there's been increases in property values that will allow us to retire the bonds much earlier.
That would be, that would be important. Counselor Luce?
Is there a cost involved in that feature?
Mayor and Council, yes, there will be some calculating of the rent, into the rate to do that, but again, we haven't rolled these out in the market yet.
There's some cost, but then you save the money in the final analysis of, from the day you call it to the, you know, whatever that value is, and if it costs a little bit to call them-
Well, and that's what I'm asking, is it a little, little bit to call it, or is it-
Well, it depends if there's sometimes-
An option.
They're callable at a premium, maybe we can get to par and be good in, you know, a lot of it, like the timing, are they fifteen years, are you into it? If you're a bond investor, you, you know, you're worried about your, your principal and your interest is important too, but if you have a really good bond with a great rate, maybe not in today's market, but years ago, and you didn't want to buy a bond with a call feature because it took it away from you, and, but it can save, in this case, our community some money.
So, so Mayor and Council, we'll be back to you once we get the final numbers and what the exact amount will be.
Counselor Whiting.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-2018-093, authorizing issuance of ten million, five-hundred thousand dollars in general obligation TIF bonds for public improvements adjacent to Canterbury Park.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one, thank you. Moving ahead then, nine eight-four, RAR Development Registered Land Survey. Michael, good to see you.
So, Mayor and Council, this is a little unusual, this is not a plat because it's a land survey. This is the site we're going to be talking about tonight, so it's RAR's facilities, and as you can see, there's a lot of parcels here. They've been working on this for many years to try and clean this up. You all approved a abandonment several years ago, and so what we're trying to do now is the areas you see here, this is actually the vacation sketch, that you vacated all of these areas back in 2012, and as you can see, there's a lot of parcels here, there are buildings built on parcels, so RAR has been making an effort as part of a registered land survey to put this back and really reflect what's there today. So, that's what this is kind of a culmination in doing. So, it's not a plat, it's basically a registered land survey, recombination of all these parcels.
Consolidation.
Yes, sir.
Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
This map right here?
This map?
Yes, sir. Pearson Second. The black line is going down the edge of Pierce Street on the east side, where the curb would be, and Second and Pierce, we've got Scott County Storage down there, and the access point comes off of Second Street, so it looks like this is including that, or am I in the wrong part?
Mayor and Council, this is just a graphic, the actual surveys are here and it's not included, so you need to look at the actual registered land survey, because this better reflects, that's just showing on the aerial, kind of the area that's impacted, but on
Okay, Second Avenue here is not part of the RLS. So the RLS basically, here is one track.
Mm-hmm.
Second Avenue is open.
Not part of the track.
This is vacated on Second Avenue.
Yep, yep.
That is actually owned by Union Pacific. And so the property line for track E actually... Now, I don't know about storage.
Who owns track, track E? So they own these businesses right here? And Certain Cues Building, right here?
Yep.
Well, they, you think on that land?
Leasing them to them or something?
They would have to apply, allow access if they have a lease or however it's arranged.
This is a, an open street here.
Right.
Right.
So they would have access on the street.
Right.
To their...
Okay.
From this point.
RAR owns it.
Yep. I just wanna make sure.
If I can remain, remind everybody.
Yep.
You have to speak into the mic because we can't hear.
Thank you.
So please, please speak into the mics. Thank you.
Counselor Whitey?
Just one question. You had mentioned that the Union Pacific owns, and I'm not sure in that specific area, but a lot of Shakopee, the city owns the right-of-way to the railroad. It's very rare, and you may need to know that.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
I think Counselor Lehman knows this also. That goes right to RAR's property. It's one mile from Marshall Road to RAR. And that, from there on, then it's Union Pacific.
Oh, okay.
I guess I feel like Counselor Lehman's question was answered because the landowner owns the land and must lease and make some arrangement with those businesses and allow access, so.
Right.
Further questions of staff? If not, thank you. Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to approve the requested registered land survey Resolution Number R two zero one eight dash zero eight seven as proposed and move its approval.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Lewis. Further discussion? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Moving ahead to our workshop. Ten A, be our first subject matter, a sign ordinance workshop.
Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just a reminder, everybody, this is a workshop. It's designed to be a little looser. It's not designed to be formal in any way. It's, there should be some give and take. And, and there's nothing in front of you for approval. This is simply a discussion time. If you find things that you want more information on, if there are things that you are concerned with, that's what this is about. None of this is here for approval. It's all for discussion.
Excellent. Counselor Lehman?
The Supreme Court case decision, is that referring to, I think it was Reed versus the City of Gilbert or something like that?
Yes, so that is a...
Yeah, I did read that one, so.
Just for the, quickly, that was a court case where there were what we would call snipe signs in an auto park for a church. And so the city picked up all the snipe signs for the church but did not pick up the auto park signs. So the church eventually worked its way to the Supreme Court and said that they had a right to put signs just like everybody else. And the court's general opinion is cities can no longer control content of signs. And if you're gonna allow signs in the right-of-way, you have to allow everyone signs in the right-of-way, whether it's political signs or otherwise. And so Mr. Whitey's gonna come up, but this is basically the model ordinance that's been adopted by municipalities. So the attorneys for this have worked and read through all the... So it was a Supreme Court decision, but every justice kind of wrote their own opinion about signs. And so the thought in the legal community is at some point they're gonna probably revisit it and tighten this down even more. So we're trying to use the model kind of national ordinance. He has shared this with the chamber. We have some things right now that are in conflict with that Supreme Court case, so we're here to try and clean this up so we can move forward with something that's within the law.
Questions?
Go ahead and ask all our questions now? Okay. First question I had was the ones that are currently non-conforming to what the new ordinance may be.
So non-conforming signs remain, become non-conforming.
Okay.
And in Minnesota, basically, that sign, we have many of them today, just stays. And even if it's damaged, they have that hundred-and-eighty-day period to get it back in shape and it can remain.
And then the next question, Mayor, if I can. One of the concerns that I had specifically about this, and it might be the terminology, but private property temporary signs. Does temporary mean not permanently structured? Or temporary, does it mean it's temporary to where it can be taken down reasonably easy?
Yeah, generally would refer to the construction of the sign, so the nature of the sign. There won't be any time limits set upon these signs, but it's mostly the idea of the construction of the sign.
Okay. The reason I ask that, because the way I was reading it, if the terminology of temporary, in my mind, if the terminology is you can only have it there for, you know, a period of time, you're then controlling content.
Right.
So, and then I started thinking about, okay, if somebody has that little thing in their flower garden by their door that says protected by ADT Security or something like that, that's a temporary sign.
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So one of the big discussions nationally and at the Supreme Court, if you read all the various decisions, is if you wanna have a sign in your front yard that says save the whales, as long as it's on your private property and it's within a size limit that's in the code, you can have that sign basically there forever. Same like the ADT signs that, those really are not regulated. If you actually wanna have a hundred political signs in your yard, you can probably do that, but it's for a time period. So we have an ordinance that says it can be out for a certain period of time before and after election. That's, you can do that, 'cause you can regulate a period of time for certain sign.
Well, and that's, Mayor, that's exactly why I asked this question. Does that mean we can regulate the period of time on the sign that says ADT Security System or something? Or is it specifically political signs and?
Specifically, political signs were addressed by many of the justices. Those are set up for a specific event versus your personal opinion on saving the whales or the climate or whatever. You can have that opinion all the time.
If somebody wanted, can I just?
Well, I mean... There was a, there was a section in here on the, on the security signs, and there was a size limit. So the ADT sign might not, I think that's spelled out separately.
Well, but I think it asked a bigger question. We're gonna be debating this just like a Supreme Court, cool, huh? But what if a guy wants to put up a sign that says no parking on private property for their spot or reserved for whoever? Or, well, any kind of personal message sign. Maybe somebody wants to put a sign up that says no trespassing.
It's on your personal property.
And Mayor and Council, those are regulated in that temporary, you know, 'cause those are not permanent, 'cause of the type of construction. But for instance, the ADT sign, it's regulated by size. We don't regulate that it says ADT or whatever. You can put whatever you want on it, but we just regulate the size.
Okay.
If we can let Mr. Whitey go through his presentation, and I think it will answer some of your questions.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Yes.
Nice to meet you all. I haven't been here yet.
Welcome.
Thank you.
New employee.
So yeah, so we talked about signs for a little bit. So I got a little presentation put together here. Hopefully answer some of your questions, and afterwards we can answer some more. So we already talked a little bit about why now. So yeah, Reed v. Town of Gilbert happened in 2015, and it struck down Gilbert's sign code based upon their regulating content. And they specifically called to the Free Speech Clause, the First Amendment, and the Equal Protection Clause, the Fourteenth Amendment, as their ordinance implicitly regulated the content of the signs and where they may and how they were placed. And so when that sign ordinance, when Gilbert's ordinance was struck down, it struck down the entire ordinance and kind of left the town in limbo without a sign ordinance for a while, so they had to rush and redraft and re-adopt a new ordinance. So that kind of brings us to the current issues that our current sign ordinance has. So it currently does have issues with constitutionality. There hasn't been anything that's happened yet, but there's a possibility that there are areas where we are in jeopardy of potentially being sued. And also, just with clarity and ease of use for residents and for staff, the current sign ordinance is a little hard to read for me as I use it every day. I can only imagine what it'd be like for residents occasionally. So kind of, I'll be outlining some issues that currently exist with the ordinance and kind of why we should be overhauling it completely and not just maybe piecemealing fixing here or there where we maybe think it is inadequate. So some of the potential issues currently, so the city's purpose statement for the sign ordinance isn't very thorough. It's two sentences, and so having that thorough purpose statement that just shows, defines what the city's purpose in regulating the signs are and where they stand and how they can do this. So this is important for sign ordinance, especially as they relate to regulation of speech. And obviously, the Supreme Court looks at the regulation of speech much harder than any other sort of ordinances. Yeah, and so also, the current ordinance regulates based on content in many areas. So again, temporary signs, we have a whole section about temporary signs and different events that have, can have different standards of size and where they can be placed. And currently, we allow some signs in the ordinance to be posted in the right-of-way and others that cannot be posted in the right-of-way. And exactly what happened Town of Gilbert, it was shot down by the Supreme Court, and that could happen again. So currently, we have a general idea of enforcing it, is not allowing any in the right-of-way, but in the ordinance today, it does say that some can be in the right-of-way and some can't be, based on what the sign says or what the purpose of it is. It also, there's an explicit part of the ordinance that prohibits offensive signs. It doesn't define what offensive sign means, but, which could cause you a lot of issues if we took sign down for offensive nature, and then the person for the sign up necessarily wouldn't agree with that. And also brings us to another point with the Town of Gilbert, as the current ordinance does not include a severability clause. So severability clause basically would cover the remainder of the ordinance. So say the offensive sign aspect of the ordinance was struck down by a court, that wouldn't necessarily strike down the entire ordinance with it. So the severability clause is just in there to make sure that if there is something that has an issue, that the rest of the ordinance doesn't also get struck down with it and kind of leave us in that limbo where we're rushing to draft something, adopt something new, to put something in place. Another issue that has came up recently is that our sign code does not set illumination standards for signs. That was an issue with a sign near a nice statue that was just put up in our front yard. And so that kind of came up, and so this, the draft ordinance would set some standards for light signs, LED lights, floodlights, stuff like that, just so they aren't overly bright or intruding on other people's property or on people driving and being distracted that way. Another issue is the sign adjustment process. So currently, the sign adjustment process has four criteria for approval with the Board of Adjustment Appeals, but it explicitly states in the ordinance that all of these criteria are not necessary to met, to be approved. And what this can kind of put you in an issue is if, say, one sign or one application's approved based on these criteria and another one's not, and if the, and since they don't need to meet all the criteria, that creates sort of a subjective nature of the approval process, which could bring issues in legally as well there. Could be the idea of giving special privileges to signage based on issues that maybe don't exist in the criteria stated. Another issue again is the current ordinance is confusing. So there are four, for an example, there are four separate sections in the ordinance that are regulating overlapping districts, as an example. So one five, one point one eight nine regulates all commercial districts, major recreation, industrial, and business parks. So not all districts in the city, but then they do in that section include the sign adjustment process, which would be applicable for all zones and areas in the city, and the same with the P O D regulation is also included in that section. And then the next section, one nine oh, is in nature to the location of signs in all districts. And then the next section of that is one nine one, which then goes back to rules for just traditional town center, traditional commercial corridor, and contemporary commercial corridor overlays, again, even though it was already addressed in the previous section. One nine two then goes on to address traditional commercial corridors, contemporary commercial corridors, and major recreation overlays. And then finally, one nine three goes on to address office, business park, and industrial zone. So I think you can understand how this could be confusing to somebody who hasn't looked at it before, as there are four sections that generally have overlapping rules for the same districts. And another issue are the overlay districts themselves. So these overlay districts were put in place in 2014 when the current ordinance was drafted, and in these, in these districts, they actually bring different standards to parcels in the same zoning district. So for example, the B one highway business district currently has four different standards for the same zoning district. This kind of creates, this regulates, this is an idea of regulating signage by type of use or area rather than by the zoning district, and it doesn't, it's not consistent. And it also is another way to create confusion. You're adding another layer on to an already confusing process, and it's hard for people just to understand it. In addition to the overlays, they haven't been updated to reflect recent development or rezonings that have happened in the city. And in consequence of that, there are gaps in regulation currently in the city of Shakopee. Next slide here is just an overview of what our sign overlay districts looks like currently, and I have a few areas highlighted. So currently, roughly around twenty commercial parcels in the city actually have no signage standards because they are not in an overlay district, and our sign code does not specifically regulate commercial zones in their zoning designations. So I've highlighted some areas around one oh one. There's about a dozen parcels there that currently do not have any standards. There's some areas around City Hall, actually, just down Marshall Road, that currently technically have no sign standards. And also, the area of High V was rezoned and currently would technically have no sign standards. Another issue with the overlays is that it's not clear about the reasoning by why they are what they are. So generally, you can look at it and say the contemporary commercial would be areas around the freeway, one sixty-nine, with the exception of the West Shakopee Gateway area, which is lumped in with the traditional commercial corridor zoning overlay. And there's not really any explanation or reasoning why this is in existence. So it creates issues with enforcement and trying to bring this out to the public and figure out why these places have different standards, for what reason. Currently, that does not exist. And also, one more is the Agriculture Preservation District also currently has no set standards. And as you can see, much of the city still is in the Agriculture Preservation District, which currently has no sign standards. That could be an issue. So it leads us to the draft ordinance rewrite. So some big ideas here. So this is completely replacing the existing ordinance. There are some aspects of the existing ordinance that is retained, namely the standards of signs in districts, size standards, height standards, and other, so a few other aspects. But most of, most of the language has been replaced with this kind of skeleton draft of a ordinance drafted from a municipal lawyer association. This also defines a purpose more thoroughly, so now the purpose is defined in about seven or eight clauses and is thorough and really shows why the city is doing what they're doing. And it overly simplifies the ordinance. It eliminates overlays. Now, signs we base, regulate based upon their zone, not on their location or their potential use. And by doing this, you are now covering all parcels in the city, and you will be covering the parcels in the city if there are any changes, any rezonings, any annexations, any additions to land. It also removes content-based regulations, so we're not allowing any signs in the public right-of-way, for instance. It removes government uses from regulation. So currently, in the ordinance, there are a lot of caveats saying if you're a public institution or if you're this or that, you will be allowed these different standards. Generally, that's just the idea, just to say, well, government users are exempt from their own regulations. And generally, it follows the existing size and height standards of what's already in existence, so it's not really changing the physical nature of the signs themselves too much. It also creates a new category of highway signs. So realizing that removing these overlays will standardize size standards for highway business zones, specifically, you know, the ones on Marshall, the ones out on one sixty-nine. So by creating this new category of highway signs, this allows for businesses whose primary means of identification is either one sixty-nine or other high-speed routes through the city, different, slightly higher standards for what they can put up for their signs. I'll go back to that in a minute. And also, it raises the review for signs, which would exceeding their current standards. So it would raise it to a conditional use permit. So that would most, that would equalize and kind of bring them to a standard that is easy to, as identified criteria that they have to meet, and the approval has to go by what those criteria are met. And again, it's based upon national best practice by the Municipal Lawyers Association, so hopefully if anyone knows laws. Hoping the municipal lawyers do. So next, I'm gonna kind of go through a few slides showing what these standards could look like visually. So for residential districts, currently, all permanent free, permanent signs are not allowed. And that would generally stay the same. Temporary signs will be permitted without a need of a permit, subject to the standards that an owner may place up to a total of 32 square feet of signs per their lot of total silage, which each sign being limited to a max of four square feet. Or eight square feet for real estate signs, realizing that usually, real estate signs have a.
They don't need a, don't need a permit for those.
Nope, these are, you just, you can just put these in your yard, however, whenever you like, whenever issues come up.
Yeah, okay.
Anything above 32 square feet would require a permit, of course. Most permanent sides, again, are not permitted in residential districts, aside from area identification signs. So that would be signs that would add, identify a subdivision like Windermere or an apartment building like South Bridge Crossing, something that lets people know where you are.
Residential monuments.
Yeah, monument signs like that, yeah. So those standards would, the size standards would depend on the size of the development. So for developments under four acres, that'd be like in the example, an apartment building would be 32 square feet for any development under four acres. And then from four to 40 acres would be up to 48 square feet. And then anything over 40 acres, you'd be allowed up to 96 square feet. And then these can be, this square footage allotment can be accomplished through one large sign, if you'd like. Or you can have smaller signs at entrances to, and actually, as long as you stay under that total square footage.
Joe, on that particular slide, you see a, a sign with a phone number that's actually on the side of that apartment building.
That is true, that is.
So, so how would that be affected by this particular ordinance that we have?
Cool, so that is already there. So technically, I guess that would be nonconforming, but I would say as long as they're under that 32 square feet, they should be fine. I don't know the exact size of that sign currently.
Would that be under temporary signage?
That would be under temporary signs, the banner form, it's, they had to be the construction of the signs. That would count under temporary signage, yeah, even if it's there.
So that's considered a banner more than a sign?
It's not a permanent sign.
Yeah, not a permanent, yeah.
If they painted it on the building, that might be a different story.
If they painted on the building, it would be considered a permanent sign, yes. That would be the difference, yeah.
And you can't tell them that they can't put a phone number up because the phone number is content.
True, yes, exactly, yes. They could, they could put a phone number up, they could put, comes, live here, they could put whatever they want on there. We can't say what they can't.
Except it can't be obscene.
It can be obscene.
Cannot be obscene.
Who's, who's determining?
Currently, it cannot be obscene. Currently, today, in our sign ordinance says it cannot be obscene, that is true. But that would be, that would be regulated based on content, so.
Pardon me?
Currently, our sign ordinance does say it couldn't be obscene, but that is regulating based on content. So in the rewrite, that is no longer a part of the ordinance.
So you can have obscene signs after the rewrite?
You could.
You can.
Yeah, we, we, we don't have the ability to determine anything in regards to what's actually on the sign.
Content.
The physical structure of the sign is what we can regulate.
Regulate the size, shape.
But as Mr. Kurski also pointed out, I think that the Supreme Court will probably address this issue again in the future at some point.
Hey, Mayor Council, you can regulate. That's why we talked about having that purpose statement. So you can regulate the size of whatever's on the sign for safety and visibility. So if someone wants to put a thousand words on a sign and they're going to be this big, you could say in the ordinance, no, signs, the sign needs to be legible because you don't want to have accidents. So public safety is one of the things the court said you could take into consideration. So size of the letters can be regulated, you just can't regulate what they say.
Well, I can understand you don't want to block site triangles on corners and, and stuff like that. That's just common sense traffic safety stuff, so.
So, I mean, there was some concern, particularly in Gilbert, when this, their ordinance got struck down, that you were going to see like people writing a book about their business on a sign. Well, you can't do that because people have to stop and read it. And so the court ruled that, no, you can actually regulate, you know, if it's on a highway, the letters can be X. If it's on a slower speed street, they can be Y, and that's perfectly legal. So that'll be one of the things we incorporate in is from a size of letter.
So the court mandated the size or that's up to us?
No, that's up to us.
But you have to have a rational basis.
There has to be a rational basis for it.
Right.
And there are national standards for.
Sure.
Speed of the road and the size of it.
Yeah, and I was just going to ask that, is there a chart or something that a person can look up? I've had businesses ask me, you know, about size of lettering and that. And I said, well, you, you know, they say a 30 mile an hour sign. I always tell them, make it a 40 mile an hour sign because most people read slow, you know. Is there a chart somewhere that I could point them to, to look that up?
There is charts that do exist. I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head where they are. There are definitely associations of sign companies and sign groups that have charts like that, that identify, that help people identify what's the optimum size, what's the optimum look, what's the optimum fit of their sign. We could certainly incorporate that into this as well, to help people like that too. That wouldn't be impossible to do, but yeah, that, they do exist, yeah.
I was just looking to help businesses that are having trouble with signage.
It's, believe it or not, it's almost a science. There's lots of stuff about signs out there and what's, what's the best way to get your message across, so, yeah, it is out there.
All right, continue.
All right, so next, so the downtown business district sign standards. So generally, what is already enacted today for the overlay of the downtown business district is pretty much the exact same as the zone. So this is a pretty clean move over from an overlay to a zone. So most of the standards will remain the same, but I'll just repeat them anyway. So the standards in the downtown district today, as they remain, so maximum size for wall signs will be up to 32 square feet. Or if there's multiple tenants in the building, like as shown, then it's 32 square feet for, per tenant. And freestanding signs currently are not allowed in the downtown business district, and they still will not be. With the zero lot lines setbacks and all that, it's hard to have freestanding signs and make them fit with the lots.
I have a question on this. And so if I own a building and it's a, I have a tenant, they can have one up to 32 square feet. But if it's an, if I have an awning and I write on it, I can't have the sign and writing on the awning only up to a grand total of 32 square feet, right?
So for awning signs, they will be included in your wall sign allotment, so yeah, so if you're.
So the top thing with the chiropractor, if that's at 32, then they couldn't have anything on the awning, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it's, they're already there, yeah.
Let's clarify that a little further. Is it the actual size of the writing? Let's say you have, you know, let's use an example here. The awning on the bottom that's got writing on it, you take the writing portion, not the whole awning.
Yeah, so generally, it's the, it's a invisible box that would go around the writing. And so you'd go by the largest extent of the letters and then, so it wouldn't include the whole awning, no.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so.
In your example here, you've got one for Arnie's Friendly Folks Club. It's a, it's a very old sign that projects from the building. I believe projected signs do not meet the new sign ordinance?
So projected signs are, the standards are the same for projected signs. The only difference is for new projecting signs, there will be a clearance requirement of eight feet, six inches, and a projection limit of five feet from the building. But any signs that already exist obviously would be nonconforming and would.
And just, just to be clear on this, old signs like that, when they want to take them in and get them redone, I know they can be put back up, is there a time limit that they can be down?
Generally, 180 days, so should be plenty of time to get a sign refilled.
I just wanted to make sure it was in there.
And yeah, so the only departure again from the current ordinance is, is kind of putting that clearance just so it's not blocking people's way or getting in a way or anything like that. Currently, there is none, so I think it's a good idea just to have that, so they don't, in the future, have any issues with that. So the next, we're going to go into commercial districts. So this is probably the districts that'll see the most change. Generally, there won't be a lot of change, but there will be some change, so I like to point that out. So freestanding signs currently are allowed 120 square feet. So for the, for the rewrite, freestanding signs will be allowed 100 square feet per sign face. That would be 100 square feet on both sides of the sign, not, they're not included into one. And then with that, you will still allow electronic signs. So it's going to be digital billboards or like in the gas station, a digital number marker like that. Could be up to 32 square feet and be integrated into the sign or be on its own, if you'd like. And signs may up, still be made up to 30 feet in height, which they currently are. And they still need to be setback 10 feet from the right of way, except for monument signs, which will be allowed to be setback five feet from the right of way because they usually have lower profile and they're less, yeah, they're usually lower profile and closer to the ground. The only additions would be freestanding signs would be added another, a more clearance, so eight, eight and a half feet for, for freestanding signs next to walkways and 15 feet next to driveways, just so you get that clearance there.
Can you go back one slide? Down on the lower right, freestanding sign must be setback at least 10 feet from the right of way, which I get, or must not be located in the required rear or side yard setback. Some of these buildings don't face the front. So that, is the rear the rear or the, the, the street face or?
So generally, we consider the front to be the area where the main access point would be. So for that.
That's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
That's going to be a problem.
So if a building has a, you know, maybe even like this gas station, or I think the front's on the interior. So I'm looking at a side yard or a rear, rear right now.
Mayor, let's use the, is it the Holiday, SA up on Verling and, and Marshall?
Yeah.
The access point is you turn on Verling, you go down a half a block, and then you turn in, come in from the west. But their frontage is really on Marshall Road.
But it's the back of the building.
Their access is the backside of the building.
It's car wash side.
Right, so we're going to say that where they want to put their advertising is the back of the building facing Marshall Road, and they're not allowed, so.
Well, for the rear yard setback, it would be 30 feet or 20 feet. That can be.
There's not that much space between everything up there. So I think we're going to have to take a look at that portion of it.
For sure.
That's why I brought it up.
I think we need, I think we need to define what's front and back.
Well, but I, I think if you have an interior facing business and your back faces the road, obviously, that road frontage is where you want your sign. But that would be considered the rear yard setback. And I'm reading this going, I can't have a sign there, and that.
Right.
Well, and I guess my definition would be where the public enters the building would be the front of the building.
But that's not the case. That's, even if you use SA, if SA hears this, I'm not picking on you, just using your location as an example. But if you use that same SA, you're entering on the west side of the building, which is opposite of Marshall Road and Verling. So you're saying that's their front. That's really, there's no exposure for visibility for a sign on that side.
Mayor, Mayor Council, what we'll look at is how a building is addressed. That's how a lot of cities do. So if it's addressed on the back side, that's where their sign could go. So that's one of the things we can take a look at. Again, this is designed to get feedback, so this isn't written in stone, we can take a look at it.
And there's a variance process also, isn't there? So they could come back and talk about it.
That's a good point, where what their street address is, should be the front of their building. Joe, continue.
Thanks for the feedback, we can get in there. All right, so next we'll be looking at wall signs for the commercial districts. So wall size standards will generally remain the same. So that'll be allowing 120 square feet onto the front of the building again. And then 75% of that square footage allotment could be permitted on, on the other side. So the backside of the, the rear, the rear side or the other sides of the building. So the largest difference here is currently, the sign ordinance allows for the 120 square feet for signage or 10% of a building's wall area with the caveat whichever is greater. And so I'd like to point out the Holiday Inn on the bottom there. Technically, the Holiday Inn today could have a sign that would be over 1,000 square feet on that side of the wall.
Because 10%, of.
10% of their wall.
This has been bantered in our community for 20 years. And as big boxes came in and it was a percentage of the front face, but then you tuned it down and, you know, even like Amazon's building is huge and then they got this, you know, their sign. And maybe they're not into signage because it's not a retail location with the, I know we've had businesses wanting, you know, bigger signs or more attention, so.
Right, right. I haven't seen any businesses who have pushed that limit in our, in any research or anything. But it is very large, so I don't think Holiday Inn would do something like that, but it's just an I.
Another example is like, I work for Target. So Target in our community want a sign on the front of their building where people come in. They also faced 169 and they wanted signage on the backside too. So how would our new, this new ordinance fall into that?
So for, for Target generally, so we'll speak about the highway signs in a second. So highway, so.
Okay.
So the idea of, of doing this is kind of making the hi, this zone work for both the traditional and the contemporary, which is currently what they are separated now. So kind of trying to how to make these two still work as one zone with the signage requirements. So the idea here would be to, to limit the wall signs for the highway business from the 10% to one lineal, one square foot for every lineal foot of frontage, which is what the previous ordinance had already listed, so we're just kind of reverting back to that. And then the way to alleviate that would then be the highway signs, which we'll get to in a minute. But they were, they will generally, certain parcels which abut certain roadways would be, would be, would get larger standards, knowing that their main means of identification are on the freeways and those high-speed roads. So that is addressed in a little bit, but yes. And so, yeah, so the idea here is mostly keeping these wall standards the same, except just kind of tinkering them a little bit so they work for, for the entirety of the zone.
For the SA example also, where their major traffic corridors, Marshall Road and Verling, and their front of their building where they enter is on the internal parking lot. We'll have to see when we get to highway.
Yeah, okay. So next we'll go at the industrial office and business park standards. So these have remained unchanged since the previous ordinance was already regulated them based upon their zone. Didn't see it as necessary necessarily to change that. So it'll stay the same wall signs, may take up to that 5% of the building facade for each elevation and be limited to one sign on each elevation. So they could be up to four signs for a four-sided building, but each sign.
Have four signs on, on each face?
But for one side, one face, it'd be limited to the one sign.
Okay, and then do I get a monument or pylon sign as well?
You could also then put a monument or pylon sign. That would be up to 125 square feet, you'd be allowed for that. And we, up to 12 feet in height. And again, the setback would be 10 feet for the pylon sign and five feet for the monument sign.
And regulation, if for some reason, industrial office or business park abutted the residential, that wall, whatever that is, adjacency, would that be?
Currently not addressed, but we can certainly add some, we can address that for sure.
You know, we're all careful with how we zone, and I understand that. But if it ever happened, I know when we had Cub, and they had a big monument sign on a hill right next to some homes. And then up came, we have some sort of blocking light, something that blocks the light for them to, but that was an issue too, so.
Yeah, so we can certainly add.
Okay.
Something to address that for sure, that definitely, why we're at the workshop, so getting ideas is good.
Bringing up good ideas.
So next we'll be looking at major recreation. Again, major recreation also has remained mostly unchanged as the overlay district currently really only covered the already existing major recreation zones. And so that would be allowing 120 square feet per sign for wall signs or 5% of the building's facade. So it's kind of taking the commercial and the industrial standards and they're kind of combining that together.
I, I have a concern here is now that we've just, you know, approved the Canterbury project. Now, in our major recreation zone, we have some residential areas. And, and it's going to change, there's going to be several different uses in there. So is that still going to be under the umbrella of a major recreation or did we change that? I think we changed some of that zoning.
It technically would be, but the Canterbury area is currently under plan unit development. And so any planning developments kind of supersede that as a lot of them will require a signage plan that would go with it and be approved with the, the development.
The conditional use process, so.
So they would be covered by that PUD process, so.
More control.
Yeah, so we would be able to control that signage standards for that.
You know, I'm looking at your example here and it's like 40 feet in height, five feet setback is like, pretty crowding to me. 40 feet and five feet. It seems like, it seems awful close to a road.
Setback 10 feet.
Pylon signs would be 10 feet and monument signs would be five feet, yeah.
Ground-mounted monument, yeah.
Right, but, but then your, your freestanding signs can be 40 feet in height. That's a pretty tall sign.
And Mayor and Council, one of the things that someone just texted me about is that we have drainage and utilities easements in all these areas and signs are not allowed. So while ordinance may say five or 10 feet, some of those easements. Yeah, some of these easements are 20 feet. So we'll make sure that in the code that they can't go in the right of way. And there's a pretty big right of way in some of these areas and they can't go in a drainage and utility easement. So the five or 10 feet might be a moot point because they're going to be pushed way back because of right of way issues or drainage and utility. or drainage and utility easements.
From their lot line, five feet from their lot line.
But really-
Which may be ten feet.
Really, if you look at the sign in that example, that sign is probably twelve, fourteen feet high, maybe?
Should think of the Valley Fair sign outside their main entrance, and that's probably already forty feet, and it was probably grandfathered in under this zoning.
But forty feet, that's like double, triple what we're seeing here, yet. But theirs is kind of up on a pole.
Valley Fair's kind of a-
So, so Mayor and Council, the other thing is that there is a separate ordinance required for site triangles for visibility, so that will also come into play, you have to be able to meet that.
You put in easement, right of way, and then site angle corners.
That applies to all of them, I would imagine.
Correct, sir.
Okay, good, yeah.
Alright.
And, yeah, and these are existing permitted sizes, so we haven't seen it yet. I mean, I'm not saying we won't, but it's, yeah. But it's, it's a valid point.
Joe, help me understand why we do not allow signage to extend over the building's facade. In other words, you know, they must be flush with the wall, they're fastened to, and may not extend above a structure's roof line. Why is that?
So I'd, I would say that, so the idea is restricting all roof signs, and I think technically, if you're going above the roof line, it could become a roof sign. Generally, I won't hazard a guess at this moment, but I could definitely get back to you on that.
That might have come up with a couple.
We saw that in a, we saw that in a previous slide too, on the, there was a ti- tire business, and it said that-
Correct, correct.
Sign couldn't exceed on the roof line, so maybe it has something to do with the, with the look and appearance of the-
Correct, correct, yeah.
Roof line or-
That's one of the holdovers from the existing ordinance.
My guess is that once you get a, a sign up above the roof, the loading from the wind makes it a structural issue.
And Mayor and Council, that's kind of a national issue, so there has to be a lot of infrastructure now, once you get up on a roof to hold the sign up, so now it becomes kind of its own building issue. So it's, it's more than a sign, now you have superstructure holding up that sign for wind loads and snow loads. And it's an aesthetic issue, I mean, I think people will go as far as you let them, and all of a sudden, we'd have letters all over everybody's roof, so.
But if we're looking at the sign from a perspective, well, let's say a city hall sign that extends above uh, uh, the, the signage of a, of a walkway.
But it doesn't. Not on the roof.
It's, it, but, but it extends over the edge of the walkway. Now, are you saying that technically, that signage that we have on our city hall, which looks very tasteful, and extends a little bit above the roof of that particular structure?
It, it does not extend above the roof of the building.
And then there's this- So it would have to be the building, okay.
Then isn't there a clause that takes out all the requirements for civic buildings?
Yeah, government's always exempt from itself.
No, no.
I would consider the Shakopee City Hall as an awning sign.
Oh, there we go.
You're right, you're on the standard.
Very good.
Good answer.
Welcome to Shakopee, thanks.
You know, that was a test question.
That was great. You can come tomorrow to work.
Alright, so now we'll go to our last sign, so these are the highway signs, which would be the new category. So realizing that some of these, specifically the freestanding signs for the commercial businesses have been limited a little bit, to be allowing a, a highway sign, so this would be a new category that'd be permitted for highway businesses and major recreation districts nearby what we currently consider our principal arterial routes, so that would be County Road twenty-one and Highway one sixty-nine. Generally, I chose the principal arterial category because it's something that is generally agreed upon by the city, and it's, they are generally higher traffic, higher speed, wider, larger roadways, which could require more identification. And so in this example shown, the, the free, these highway signs could be up to one hundred and seventy-five square feet in size of area, and they could be up to, again, forty feet in height, and they would be setback, these would actually have twenty feet set- setbacks from the right of way, so they'd be a little bit more setback. But, yeah, so the general idea is to give, uh, give these businesses a, a reprieve if they have any issues with the lower standards for the freestanding sign to be able to have larger signs. And the last image here is kind of, these are the parcels that would be affected by this, so the, um, so the area that would be, would, uh, would get these parcels to have, to be applicable for this would be five hundred feet from the center line of a roadway, seven hundred, or seven hundred and fifty feet from the center line of a grade separate interchange. So this would capture a lot of the parcels that are currently in the contemporary commercial overlay zone. And so it's generally the same idea, you know, giving a larger standards and realizing that these people are advertising just high-speed moving cars, and not necessarily slower-moving traffic, or pedestrians, or however that works. So just giving these businesses kind of reprieve, so it's not as big of a change for them.
So you had mentioned principal arterial.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if some of those designations change on county roads and things, uh, thinking of Marshall Road and forty-two and things like that, would that automatically change the ordinance then?
It would, um, it would.
But what's currently there would then be legal non-conforming, or wait, there would be-
So these would give you higher standards, so they would then just have the higher standards.
That would, that would be a concern, because that, that's nothing that could be in our control, if it's a county.
True, true, true. And other, other ways to do this, we could do, you could do it by, um, speed limit of the roadway, um, also less under, not necessarily under our control, but generally, higher speeds are gonna go along with-
Just something for thought when we sort of put this together.
I wanna, I wanna go back to your five hundred feet from the middle of the roadway. What's the ri- what's the right of way on one sixty-nine out here, you know?
So generally, the right of way on one sixty-nine, hazard a guess, let's see, about two lanes, fifteen apiece, thirty, probably, guess around a hundred feet, maybe more?
Four hundred?
Four, okay, a little more, so it's from the center line, and that'd be two hundred, and then, so that'd give you three hundred feet from the freeway, so.
So you'd have to be three hundred feet further back.
That would be the extent of how far, yeah, how, what parcels would be able to build the signs. So it would, it would affect for the entire parcel, um, the, the-
I'm not sure I understand. Five hundred feet from the center, so if it's four hundred right of way,
But it's the center line, not the right of way.
That's two hundred on both halves, so you get two hundred to get to the edge of the road. Now you gotta go another three hundred to be five hundred from the center.
So the five hundred feet is only to identify the parcels, so.
Mayor and Council, so the five hundred feet is, so two hundred feet from the center line, that gives you three hundred feet. If you're in that three hundred foot zone, you can get a highway sign.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, just to determine the type of parcels, not necessarily how far the sign had to be.
Got it.
Yep.
The other way. Um, our community is, uh, some, I think a majority takes pride that there's no billboards in our community.
On my list, yeah.
I think there's one. Uh, and we're continuing that, right?
Yep, that is, that is going through, that is one of the pieces that we've taken through, yes.
Yep, good. Counselor?
You know, another thing, and, and I may have hit it, and it could be judged in different ways, but what, and I don't wanna specifically point out the content, but we have a lot of temporary agencies that kind of do a sign war, and they're putting it on rights of way, they're putting it on public property. How is that addressed in these situations?
So no signs will be allowed in the public right of way, period, end of discussion, done.
Counselor Lewis?
How are we gonna address that, is there gonna, is CSO gonna make a once-a-week trip around and pull them, or?
So Mayor and Council, right now, he is making a once-a-week trip and pulling signs, so, and I'll give you an example. Another community I worked in, we're in political season, and in one week, they pulled seven hundred political signs up. And I can tell you the campaigns realized, don't put them in the public right of way then. They gave them a call and said, we have your seven hundred signs. So I think, um, it's slowly with enforcement, at this, the code enforcement officer is out once a week pulling signs right now.
Mayor City Clerk does a good job of trying to tell them what to do, but.
And, and I notice, I will say, that political signs are pretty much out of the right of way this year, compared to other-
Better.
Better, um, and so there will be no signs, except informational signs that are allowed, so road signs, the state.
Well, the, the spa sale this weekend, there were signs everywhere.
Those signs would not be allowed.
Yep, and the temporary, uh, hiring-
Talk about content.
Signs where they put, you know.
Again, this is how Gilbert lost their sign code, was because of these snipe signs.
I think we gotta just recognize that there's some unique features in Shakopee. Um, I, I'll give you a couple examples. There's houses on Fourth Avenue, pretty much from one end to the other, that the right of way of Fourth Avenue goes right up to the foundation. These people don't have a yard to put a sign in, technically, they're in the right of way. They wouldn't be able to put a for-sale sign up if they're selling their house without being in the right of way. They can't put a political sign up for somebody without being in the city's right of way.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, we'll look at that, I mean, I think it's a slippery slope, and when you start allowing special exceptions, as Mr. Whiting's pointing out.
But you're taking away their ability to even participate in their community.
We, we will look and see what exceptions can be granted.
Some of those residential ones will be a little-
It's gonna be-
Counselor Lewis?
Well, to Counselor Lehman's example, all along Fourth Street on both sides, there are sidewalks. So if they're on the house side of the sidewalk, they might still be in the right of way, but they would, I guess I would look at allowing them at that point, because that's considered their, no, no, on the house side of the sidewalk. That's their front yard, even though their front yard is right of way.
Even then, it's a foot.
So Mayor and Council, the sidewalk on Fourth Avenue is one foot adjacent to the property line, so they have plenty of room. I think the back of, um, common rule used in cities is boulevard, curb, whatever, sidewalk, and then signs go on the other side, so it's not in the curb lawn, that's considered right of way.
Okay.
Right. And the only reason I'm doing it is because of the sign ordinance is, uh, in place right now.
Well, yeah, you, you're gonna have a lot behind this.
I wanna make a comment about this, I, our sign ordinance has been worked over in our community-
Oh, my gosh.
Multiple, multiple, multiple times in the twenty-plus years. As I read this, I believe it's cleaner, more simpler, we gave up some, we gave up some pretty good examples here, maybe some one-offs, but, or issues that have come up in the past, but I think it's more defined here on this document, so I, as we read this first draft, uh, hats off to staff on this.
Good work.
I have a couple more questions. I'm on, uh, well, you don't have page numbers on here, but I guess it would be signs not regulated. And if I'm reading this right, the green is what you're proposing to keep, everything else goes?
Oh, yeah, if, if, if it's highlighted green, that's, that's generally been carried over, um.
Okay. The green, at least from my eyesight, is really hard to read what's in the green.
Yep.
Could be just me, but number four, um, or number A.
You know, you know what page, uh, how far back you are?
It's, uh-
Oh, there we go.
Third page?
Yep.
Sec- back a second page. Signs that are located on the interior of a building or structure, okay, not regulated. Signs that can only be viewed from within the lot or parcel of land on which they are located, and not from a street or other public right of way. So that ADT-protected little sign there can be viewed from the neighbor's property or the public street, that is now not, now it is regulated, based on that?
Um, that's just identifying, so for example, if you had a structure that was a square with an interior courtyard, it's a, it's definitely that you could have a sign in that interior courtyard without government regulations. Or if you had a wall, and you had something on the inside of the wall, not facing the right of way or the properties, then that sign would then not be regulated.
Do we have anything in here for the rest?
I think a good example would be Valley Fair, I think, so Valley Fair, you would have, um, say, a sign that could only be viewed from Valley Fair, and couldn't be viewed from outside the property, then we would not be then regulating that sign.
Okay, cause that wasn't clear to me that that is referring, B is referring to A, which are the interior of the building or interior, so that wasn't clear. And then I didn't see a section in here for residential.
Um, for the draft or for the current ordinance?
For the draft.
Uh, there should be a, there is a residential, it should be the first specific, um, regulation by district. It'll be one five one one nine oh.
Here.
Counselor Mokel?
I believe that he is looking at, um, the edited version, this is actually the draft. Nothing's a final version, so the draft is actually this one.
I'm looking at the one with the green markup on it.
One with the green.
That would be, the green with the green marker, that would be the current one. Um, so I created that document, um, after, I mean, with the planning commission, they wanted to have a sort of line-by-line look at the current ordinance and, and what we'd be maintaining, and what wouldn't we be maintaining. So the ones with the green highlighting is the current ordinance. And I believe residential districts is, is the last district mentioned in the current ordinance. I can't remember the exact number, but it would be the last specific district.
Kathy, I don't have one that says draft on it.
Is that the second item, ten B?
Yep, so it's the-
I, I don't have one that says draft on it, like yours.
Well, this one I printed off, so it's just the clean copy.
It starts right after the map, and it starts with one five one point one eight five. We probably should have had draft written on that, sorry about that.
Yeah, there wasn't anything on that.
Okay, yep.
So that's the start of the new ordinance.
Residential district, page six.
So, page six. Residential districts.
How far we down?
So it starts off by saying when a sign is authorized on the pro- property, so residential property owner has to get authorization?
So the term authorized here would be it's permitted and wouldn't require a permit.
So if you're gonna put up no trespassing sign, you need a permit for that?
It would not require a permit, it, so.
Automatically authorized.
As long as it's not bigger than-
On page four, or page three, authorized signs is one five one one eight eight, and that lists all signs that would not require a permit. And then following that is one five one one eight nine, which is permit required, which outlines the signs that would require a permit. So anything under authorized signs would not require a permit.
We, we should probably put that in when it says when a sign is authorized per section one, that way, that, that's clear.
That's clear.
You may, uh, authorized sign, but it doesn't need a permit, cause it's naturally authorized.
Authorized, yep. That was the idea, but I can definitely certainly point that out, make that look clear, for sure.
I guess this is Matt's question, I apologize.
Boy, I actually see that very lightly draft is on this.
Yep, there's a draft watermark on that, yeah.
I can't pick it out.
Make that darker next time, sorry.
Did mine off the internet.
Well, like I, you know, my concern is with the individual property rights, and, I mean, it's an easy challenge to make for a private property owner that wants to put a couple of small little signs up in their garden or something up against their house. Uh, maybe they have four or five little, I don't know, whatever, gnome signs or something. The argument can be made, you have, now have five of these little gnome signs with your gnomes in your garden, we only allowed four. The property owner's gonna win that case, hands down.
Well, let's do this, we've given staff a lot of input here, and, um, worked through this, this is a workshop designed actually-
Yep.
For the questions that we rose, and we will-
Counselor Lehman, I'm, I'm sorry, I'd just like to say, um, we can definitely make, we can, we actually discussed not having an upward limit of the number of signs on a property, um, that could certainly be something that we could amend in this as well, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna restrict individual property owners' rights, uh, but I do wanna protect from like the site triangles and traffic safety and-
Yeah, we're generally try-
Conformity and uniformity and all those things that go with it, uh, lighting, I know.
Trying to simplify this and make this easier for everyone to comprehend and use.
I don't know what the answer is to properties like Jay's, or, or my mother's, or some of these other folks that happen to be in an area where the road over the years, Fourth Avenue, has got wider and wider, and the sidewalk literally is two feet from-
I'll move him out of the boulevard tonight.
It's, it's two feet from the wall of her house, you know.
Counselor Lewis?
Uh, my question is, when did the CSO start pulling right-of-way signs? And is there any way to check and see accident reports from that date on? Because I think those things cause a ton of accidents.
Oh, I don't-
We'll, we'll check, I mean, I think that, um, there was an article in one of the city news briefs and in the newsletters talking about, well, you like putting out your signs, they're not legal, and they reference a Supreme Court case and said, we're in the process of redoing the sign code, so. But I agree, I mean, there are some corners, cause I've been out, when they pulled them, there are some signs, on some corners, there's forty to fifty different snipe signs.
My, Mayor, my last thought on this is, I think there's a valid educational opportunity with the, with the, you know, trying to define right-of-ways everywhere is, is gonna be expensive, because they, they vary. But from an educational, public communication-type standpoint, saying this side of the side, the roadside of the sidewalk is typically right of way, and the other side is typically okay. and the other side is typically okay, I, I think that does a lot. I think that really goes a long way.
Does a lot in, a lot of areas, but there's some areas that don't, you know, unfortunately, we got away from sidewalks years ago and
Yep.
I do have some areas, but, uh, push them back and, uh.
Mayor and Council will look at those issues.
Yeah.
If, if anybody else, councilors, have more feedback, uh, email staff, um, and we'll see this back. Thanks, Joe.
You.
Great job.
And, and, you know, and that may be part of, you know, we've been working on the sign ordinance for a while. We saw the sidewalk policy that has to come up. You know, and we can maybe try to get those two to marry up when we bring that forward as well.
Okay.
Um, thank you. Move ahead. Ten B, draft, uh, review draft of tables of uses. Michael, boy.
Mayor and Council, um, Mr. Saboto was presenting this, but someone's probably gonna ask, why are we doing this? Well, one of the issues is, when I came two years ago, no one could explain the zoning table. And we heard from customers that they were spending literally hours on the phone asking questions because most cities have a table where any user can go, you can look, find a use. You can go over and say, it's either allowed, a conditional use, not allowed. And so Mr. Saboto's been spending about the past year accumulating all the issues we have with the zoning code and he'll quickly go through this and be happy to answer any of the questions and get some input.
He's found a lot of different uses, huh?
Welcome, Kyle.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, started, started a while ago as kind of a backburner project, uh, over the winter of setting up, uh, setting up a zoning use table to, uh, kind of look for, look for errors and also mainly for customer service and for ease of use for not only, uh, staff, but residents and members, uh, board members, things like that. So we started by reviewing the zoning ordinance and, uh, coming up and making a big spreadsheet of all the different uses that are in the zoning ordinance and, uh, looking for redundancies, errors, omissions, uh, things that need to be corrected. So the current code, uh, in the current state has been amended numerous times, uh, over the past couple decades using similar, but not exa- exactly the same terminology for some of the same types of uses. Uh, it's strictly list-based. As Mr. Kersky said, it requires reading each chapter or district to determine what uses are allowed. So if you have a parcel of property that's highway business, you look in the highway business chapter and you read what sort of uses are allowed, whether they're permitted or conditional. And then if you have a different parcel of property that's zoned another district, then you have to read that specific chapter. And so if you're a new business coming to town and you're looking for, okay, well, I make widgets or this kind of, or I do this kind of thing, where can I go? Well, you'd have to read the entire commercial zoning code and go through all those lists. So as part of the length, uh, as far as looking at this, the uses and design standards in the code are approximately a hundred and forty pages of the zoning code. So there's, there's nineteen different zoning districts and there's pages of the lists of uses that are permitted and conditional for each one of those. So this is a screenshot of part of the heavy, heavy industry zoning district regulations. So you can see there's the permitted uses and then there's conditional uses. And that goes on for a couple pages and each zoning, and each zoning district that we have has pages like this. And in hard copy form in, in the zoning code, it's about a hundred and forty pages worth of material.
Wow.
So. So there's problems with the current code, not only with it being a hundred and forty pages. Uh, there's similar and conflicting language. Uh, in, if you look at different districts, uh, there's administrative, executive, and professional offices in one district as a permitted use. And in another district, offices and office buildings are allowed in another district. They mean exactly the same thing, but the terminology is not the same. Uh, there's unnecessary requirements, uh, that we've looked at. We, uh, review conditional use permits for health and fitness facilities. It's been a common complaint. Uh, say a SNAP Fitness or an Anytime Fitness, they've had to receive a conditional use permit. Um, they're generally, uh, not intrusive uses. Uh, so we looked for areas of, for efficiencies, uh, things that we see routine requests for conditional use permits, ways we can streamline review. We wanted to take a look at that. Uh, we kind of, uh, branched out beyond just looking at this as far as creating a ta- creating tables and, uh, slimming down the zoning code, but we also looked at, looked for things that don't necessarily make sense or changes in common complaints that we've heard over the years. So those are some things. Uh, another listed conditional use is multiple principal structures on a lot. That's a conditional use permit in every zone. So you had one parcel of property and the way your business functions, you wanted to have two buildings and you have offices in both buildings, you'd have to get a conditional use permit for that. It's kind of, staff sees that as unnecessary. Um, zoning code and building permits, we review for all the circulation standards. Um, it's really just kind of wasting time. There hasn't been any, uh, hasn't been any denials that I'm aware of on conditional use permits for multiple structures on a lot. Uh, so that's something that we looked at, uh, at removing. Uh, there's unnecessary use listings in the code. Uh, relocated structures is listed as a permitted use. Uh, relocated structures are governed by the building code, um, so that's not something that needs to be part of the zoning code. Uh, another listed use is showroom facilities, which is a retail, we, which we'd call a retail use. If you read through the zoning code, a showroom facility was only allowed in the community commercial zone. Wasn't allowed in our other, uh, neighborhood commercial, highway business. Um, it just doesn't make sense. So other problems, we had, uh, listed uses that no longer makes, that no longer make sense. Uh, hospitals and funeral homes in the R-one C zone, those were in place for specific single users that are no longer there. Uh, St. Francis Hospital used to be, uh, near the downtown area. There were a couple funeral homes operating in the R-one C's, in the, operating in the R-one C zone. Uh, there's, they're no longer operating. Um, there aren't properties that, uh, are suitable for that and staff looks at those uses as not necessarily compatible with other residential uses. So we've removed those class, removed those specific uses, uh, from the zoning tables. Uh, riding academies, which refer, uh, refers to horseback riding, uh, that's in, those were permitted uses in the sewored rural residential zone, which was based off of the rural residential zone. So if you recall, a few years back, uh, Beckridge Park Estates and the residents on Hildale Drive, when they received sewer service, their properties were rezoned to sewored rural residential. Those lots are under one acre. Having horseback riding academies on lots less than one acre doesn't make a lot of sense. So, uh, tho- that was, uh, clearing up some language and some hu- kind of housekeeping there. There's con- confusing language in some of the listings. Single, such as single-family detached residences previously constructed as accessory uses to a church where the resulting lot meets the design standards. In other words, it's a house. It used to be a rectory or a parsonage and the church split off the property. They made a lot that's, uh, meets the zoning standards for lot size and setbacks. And then they sold it or rented it as a house. It's a house. So.
What if it's part of the church structure? They got the church building and then they have the residency as part of the actual church complex?
We would call that, if it's attached to the, we would call that accessory to the church use. And this specific language is for single-family detached residences. So if it's attached, if it's attached to the church, we would look at that as an accessory.
Not physically attached, but attached as in part of the complex.
Yep.
Okay.
So. Uh, our proposal, uh, that was included in the report and is also in this presentation is to create separate tables um, showing the uses for commercial zones and the uses for residential zones. So if you have a question on, I wanna see what's allowed, I live in the R-one B zone, what's allowed in the residential zones, um, you would look at the residential table. If you're looking at, uh, industrial zone property or a commercial property, you'd look at the commercial table. Main reason for that is it's a logical separation between the different types of uses, uh, commercial versus residential. And then it also makes the table size more manageable. If we were to have all nineteen districts on one table, it would be pretty unwieldy to look at. So the proposal is removing, we remove similar language for same or similar classifications like offices and office buildings or administrative and professional buildings, uh, clarify confusing language. Uh, we wanna make the zoning code more user-friendly for staff, boards, residents, and developers. We wanna remove, uh, uses that no longer make sense, reduce the length of the code. Um, it would reduce it by about a hundred and twenty-five pages. Uh, when you're looking, looking at making changes, uh, you can certainly, all you have to do is look at the table. And, uh, for in the future, you look at the table, see what makes sense, look at, okay, well, banks or, or retail stores are allowed in this zone, they're also allowed in this zone. And you can look through that instead of reading through the whole code, can reduce the, uh, reduce the size of the code. And also removing conditional use permits for, conditional use permit requirements for non-intrusive uses. So this is the draft table. It's, this is for the commercial, commercial zones. I'll go through, uh, what the different parts of the table mean. There's the different use classifications that are on the left. And on the right side, these are the different zoning districts. These are the commercial zones. And the Ps are permitted uses. Cs are conditional uses. If there's an asterisk, that means there's specific conditions in the code that we would place on those specific uses. So for instance, if you got a drive, if you have a drive-up or drive-through window, it's a permitted use in the B-one zone, also in the B-three zone, the neighborhood commercial, major recreation, and community commercial. The asterisk means there's specific conditions that they would have to meet. For a drive-through window, that involves stacking for six vehicles in the line.
And is that current code or what you're proposing?
That is, that is current code.
Okay.
And there's current requirements that would stay. And the P with the asterisk denotes
Yep.
that you couldn't build a drive-up window with stacking for no cars or two cars.
What would really help me in this process is I take this page as what current, and then I have to go back here to see what's proposed and I have to keep flipping back and forth to try to match them up. So if we could make something that would show current and it's the same list on this side of what you're proposing, we could see what has actually changed.
Well, you're gonna like this, 'cause I have that.
Good. Well, I, I don't, so.
It's on, it's on the screen, um, as far as for printing and it, not, it's not on the screen now, but I will have it on, I will have it on the screen.
Okay.
Now, the unfortunate thing for that is with removing different classifications, they don't exactly line up because the number of table items is dec- would, is decreased in the draft.
Right, but I wanna see the exact individual changes to see if, if I agree or disagree with it.
Staff could provide that to you.
Now, now in the past, we used to be able, you used to be able to take, and I was noticing this further on, where, well, we'll use single-family is only allowed in single-family. In the past, you used to be able to take a higher-use land and use it for a lesser use, but not a higher use without a, a rezoning and regiding.
That, general, that generally that would be correct.
Downzoner?
So let's say you owned a R-two property and you wanted to put a couple of single-family houses on it. You could actually do that, but you couldn't take an R-two property and put a R-three use on it without going through the process.
That's correct. And in some cases, and that would be generally correct, but there's some areas of the city where you would want zoning for a specific type of use and not something that's
Is less.
much less intensive than what it was intended for.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Counselor Lewis?
The asterisks, they, they, I understand what they're doing, but that, does that restrict other, uh, items being placed on them? You know, like say, like you said, the stacking. And just say it was some unusual setup. Instead of six, we would still be allowed to say, well, we, we want stacking for seven because your setup just makes it better for seven. Or is it restricting us to what the asterisks?
Right now, the current language is, is six and that's, that's how it's been for probably the last decade. And we would look to continue those regulations.
Yeah, I'm just using that.
If somebody said, I wanna have, I wanna have stacking for five, then they would have to get a variance.
Okay.
Or.
If they were coming in with stacking for eight, they would be fine.
This is just a guideline, then, the asterisk?
I think, I think what his question is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is let's say you have a unique development with a drive-through that is gonna require something totally different than what the current conditions would talk about. I, I would guess that staff would try to steer them towards some kind of a process, maybe a PUD process to where, or, or a conditional use because of some special situation to where there's gonna be some give and take to make the system work. Otherwise, it's gonna have to be not denied if it's not gonna, to work to its intended function.
Yeah, but the asterisk, what asterisk means, it's not a permitted use where they get to do whatever they want.
It comes with conditions.
As long as there's, they meet the conditions that are required in the code, which would stay, then it would be a permitted use. So.
I have a question in, on, on this. You presented this in front of the planning commission and I watched that tape. Have there been any changes to the document, um, since then?
Uh, there was a, there was, uh, one section of, one part of the table that Commissioner Brennan, um, mentioned that was missed in that part. That has been added. It was regarding the public and, uh, public and private schools. Um, that was, looking through the tables, it was something that was just missed. And, uh, that's been, that's been added in there since the planning commission. But the document that you're looking at now, uh, should be nearly identical to the, what was that?
Do we, do we classify schools, public schools, as institutional?
Uh, as far as.
As the use?
In the comprehensive plan, they would be considered an institutional. For zoning, they have specific zones that they can be in.
Right.
Schools aren't permitted in every zone.
But we have like a public works building that is allowed institutional in a residential zone?
Uh, pu- yes, there's, there are classifications for that for public buildings, utility services, things like that. Those are, those are in the tables. Utility service structures like water towers, um, substations, pump houses.
Public Works Department.
Yep, and the Public Works Department is, is zoned B-one highway business.
On Fourth Avenue here?
Yes.
Next to residential?
That's zoned, that's zoned B-one highway business.
And Central School?
Zoned R-one C.
Okay. Why would we not want schools in residential areas that they're serving?
Uh, they are, schools are allowed in residential zones.
Okay.
They're not allowed in every commercial zone.
Okay.
Or an industrial zone.
So would it be possible, I'm, I'll wait until you put up on a screen and then maybe we can get a copy of that, of your
Certainly.
side by side, what the actual proposed changes are?
Yep.
Counselor White?
One by one?
So I was looking at both the current and the proposed and, um, one, one thing and no reason why it jumped out to me, but you have, you have distilleries, which it makes sense, you want them in an industrial zone, but then you have the micro-distilleries in certain zones, and then the micro-distilleries with a tasting room in different zones. I mean, B-one, it's still classified. But wouldn't those be pretty similar in, in uses?
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Whiting, there's specific state regulations that govern and they use terminologies for distillery, micro-distillery, and a distillery with a tasting room. Now, the, the rationale for different zoning districts on that particular use would be just like a brewery or a brewery with a tap room. We wouldn't want to have.
That was my next question.
We wouldn't wanna have a micro-distillery that didn't have a tasting room in our downtown. Downtown, we want for retail purposes. You don't want it to be a production facility where a customer can't go in there and buy the product. That would be an industrial use and that, we want the commercial zones to be for.
You gotta go in and buy a truckload.
Well.
Yes.
It's funny, 'cause this category that he's talking about has really evolved in the last ten years. And it used to be, you know, a, a brewery that could not sell actually on their premises back years ago. And then the, the state fixed that. But then these locations were in industrial or business, you know, hi- more industrial settings. And that's actually where we came up with.
There's a whole set of state regulations that govern all that, and that's why some of the terms might not necessarily make sense if you're not familiar with them, like wineries and farm wineries.
Yeah.
There's a definition in the state statute on what a farm winery is. They're limited by their production. And a winery would be a winery where they ship juice in or grapes and they make it on a large-scale production where, say, someone shipped grapes from California and they made wine in Chocapi and then they sold it at wholesale. A farm winery would be grapes grown on their land that they own and they're limited in their production to two. A farm winery would be grapes grown on their land that they own, and they're limited in their production to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons a year.
Some of these specific ones are defined by state statute.
Yes, and we don't, we have them defined in city code as well when we did the text amendment for those types of uses.
It's kinda ironic, Jay, because you can have two semis drop off a whole bunch of kegs, but you cannot buy one. You gotta buy it by the glass.
Yeah, yeah. That's a lot of work. This is, uh, this is great work, and I think it's gonna make people
So.
Able to look at this a lot easier.
Yeah, these are the, these are the, these are the draft tables for the commercial zones. There's actually, there's actually one more, one more page here. If you're looking in, if you were looking in the pack, in your packets, the table length for the existing, uh, existing code is longer than the draft code because the draft code, draft tables remove a lot of the redundant uses and things that didn't necessarily make sense, so.
Just to see it in this format, I know I was going, you know, when I saw it on the planning commission, I'm going, wow, this is a different way of looking at it, but then, now that I had the packet and gone through it, and I go, this is, this is better. I mean, it's quicker, it's easier, because I know that developers and people go through our code and go to page four-hundred, and then oh, back to two-hundred, and you'd have to look at two or three different sections to figure out how your widget factory or fit into the whole thing, and so I thought, I thought this was pretty good.
Yeah, there's, I've been here thirteen years. I still have to refer back to the code to think about, is there a specific use that's allowed where? I've looked at this code a lot over the years, and I know the majority of it, but somebody else that's new here, they're not gonna necessarily know what the difference is for some I2 uses versus I1, or Business Park, or what the differences are.
Counselor Lewis?
This table shows that.
Yeah, I think you did a great job here. I'm just, uh, I'm sure within six months, somebody's gonna come up with something that's not on the list, and they're gonna have questions, but that's just gonna happen. You did a fantastic job.
I, I would really like to have the two side by side, and maybe on top of one saying existing, proposed, and then a sheet that highlights the differences so that a guy can actually go through and look at in any individual.
Item by item.
You want that color-coded too?
Well, it doesn't have to be, but, I mean, when I first read this, like I said, I found myself doing one of these back and forth, and then there, since they're not lining up with each other, it's like, okay, you gotta hunt this one down.
You can separate them.
And then hunt this one down, and then I, then I mix them up, and it's like, which one was the pre, and which one's the proposed?
I did say that, because I had to write what was revised, what wasn't. So it would be nice to have those names on the charts.
And tell you what, do that with a couple of belts in you with one eye.
Well, if we could get those two, uh, the, the proposed and the old, and see where we go from there, and this is a, obviously a workshop. Um, if there's no, do you have more to present?
Uh, yeah, so I got a couple more slides. This is the resid, this is the residential table, here showing the agricultural zone, uh, and the other, other residential zones that are on there, that are in the city. Couple of minor uses that were added were columbaria, which is the, um, say urns for ashes, cremation's been more popular. There's places that, uh, typically it'd be churches that would be, where they would, where the ashes or urns would be stored. That's a common use now. That wasn't addressed in our code, so we added it there. Now, this was not intended to be an entire rewrite of the zoning ordinance. The main exercise was to get it into a table form, see what the issues are, fix the easy issues, and then work on the, work on reviewing the zoning ordinance as we move on, and also through the comprehensive plan process. So, these are the residential, these are the residential zones. Key is the same, conditional use, permitted use, asterisk has specific conditions. So, there's additional work that's needed. Uh, we're looking at creating a table of the design standards, uh, which is the minimum lot size, setbacks, hard surface. So, you could look at the differences between the different zoning districts and see all the different issues, say, well, front yard setback in the B1 zone is this, versus the I2 zone is this. So if you're looking at picking a site, you'd be able to pick the areas that you want to be a lot easier. So, be looking at creating a table of additional accessory uses. Uh, an accessory use is a use that's attached to a principal use, such as if you add a, your, at your house, gardens, fences, detached garages, things like that, that are allowed in red, that are allowed in the specific zones. There's accessory uses, so. That would be, that would be an additional table. Those are listed uses right now.
We don't need the permission to plant the flower, do we?
No.
Okay, garden?
That you can have a garden.
Okay. A three-foot fence around the garden to keep the rabbits out?
Correct.
All right.
Fences have been, rabbits can jump.
Disgusting in our community.
So, and then, uh, some additional research is needed through state statute. Uh, you'll notice that, notice that some of the tables had bold, uh, bold text for some of the industrial classifications. Uh, we've got to look at and see, make sure that we wouldn't run afoul of any state statutes with revising anything on environmental impact statements in industrial zones.
It's usually by use and, and size, right?
Correct, and class of the city, and so those are things that we need to do a bit more research on. So for discussion items, what we were looking for is the, to get council's thoughts on the general table layout, and the removal of a hundred and thirty pages of confusing code language. We're looking to create a more user-friendly document. We want to simplify the terms and reduce wordiness. Uh, to get to Counselor Lehman's request and others, others' requests, next steps, uh, we've obviously got some research to do, uh, with some additional work as far as creating tables to send out, uh, for you to review that are a little bit easier to compare. Realize this is a ma, this is a major change, and large tables are not exactly easy to compare between each other. So, this was already at planning commission. It was reviewed, and it came to council for a workshop. Planning commission didn't make any formal recommendation. We still have to go back to planning commission, uh, to review any sort of text amendment. And then there would be further city council review, then there'd be publication of the ordinance, and then we'd start looking, if the, after the comprehensive plan is adopted, we'd look at revising the zoning ordinance to fit in with the comprehensive plan. So with that, I'll turn to the tables. This is left and right. The left is, the left side is the current table, the right side is the draft table. Now, you kind of look back and forth, and on the first page, it's gonna be a lot easier because the uses are gonna line up a lot more. As you get further down, and some of the classifications were removed or reclassified, it's gonna be harder to necessarily match up and draw the lines across. Um, so I've got this for, uh, for the code, uh, for the different tables. So, if you'd like, I can flip through this. If you have any questions on spec, on anything specific, there are uses that you saw.
I think a majority of us would like this printed out, and
Yes.
And then, um, you know.
Maybe highlight the changes.
Yes.
Then I think we're gonna end up having a conversation about the changes.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, we'll do that, and then we'll take that then to the next step and bring it back, and then we can talk about, uh, uh, you know, you know,
Okay.
Any of those issues that you might have, and we'll go from there.
Counselor Lewis?
Just to make it easier for everybody to read, I'm just wondering if staff could, where they don't line up, just put a blank space on the draft so that they do line up.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
Just make it a lot easier to read.
And then put a key on both of them for your little asterisk, conditions. Permitted with conditions.
Sure you don't want color coding?
I'd just like the key to be readily available, so you're not guessing at it.
Um, other comments for staff? Thank you.
Yep, good work.
And I like that you're gonna continue to try to do this table work in other areas. Um, that I saw there, I thought that was good. It's just a different way, if it can create more efficiency and effectiveness for someone that wants to come to our community or a resident and figure out, uh, how to develop. I think that's good.
Well, it can be understood by real people.
Right.
You know, Kyle talks about, he's been working on this thing forever, and he still has to go in on occasion and dig through.
Right.
Well, you know, you could have this taped to the side of your desk and look at it on the phone and say, okay, this is what we got.
Blowing it up and putting it in a frame out here on the wall, you know.
Okay. Anything else? Kyle, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, let's move forward then. Uh, eleven A, the city bill list for our review. And eleven B liaison, it's Counselor Lehman.
National Night Out, or wait, National Night to Unite last night. Say that fast three times. Very successful program. I, what was it, a hundred and fourteen, I think? Over a hundred. Last year was a little bit under a hundred. Folks were friendly. It was a, it was a good, good, good evening. I enjoyed it, actually. Had some fun. I got a email from the Secretary, Minnesota Secretary of Transportation for a survey. I don't know if the rest of you got that survey? I actually took that survey, put a lot of time and effort into it. I really highlighted two basic points. Obviously, the river crossing capacity, um, capacity just in the southwest metro in general for moving goods and services, economic growth. You know, light rail's fine and dandy, but it doesn't, it's not gonna bring you a plumber or a rougher, or somebody that's gonna move product and service. The other issue that I kind of hit on that was the state aid formula, which in my opinion is outdated. And it really needs to be, taking a look at it from a standpoint of daily, average daily trips and population, population growth. And I, they don't do that now, and I think if they did, it would, it would be more fair to the actual needs of the areas that, that are growing, and I'm not just saying that from our standpoint, but just in general, if you have a, a small city out in wherever, nice small city that's not growing, and they're allocated the same formula as a city that's growing rapidly, it ju, the same dollars just ain't serving the same amount of at-large people. So, I raised them two issues pretty heavily in my, and I did fill it out completely, and left them a little message that if they have any questions, by all means, give me a call. That's my report.
Excellent. Um, I, I attended National, uh, Night to Unite, and I went to, I don't know, eight, eight or ten parties. I thought, uh, that's what makes our community great and strong. Um, heard from a lot of folks. I thought it was, uh, you know, like, like we all saw, a hundred and fourteen parties. I think, uh, our town, our town does well and wants to get out, and, um, is just well-attended, and our staff, the police prevention, uh, program, as well as our, the fire department, the police department, uh, you know, they really go.
Public Works Department. Public Works Department as well.
Public Works, true, excuse me, yes. Thank you, city staff, for that. Um, thank you, that's all I had.
Uh, we had the MVTA partnership meeting. They're working with a consultant group, so we met with them and kind of gave them some feedback. That was on the twentieth. Um, attended, uh, last Friday, the Diversity Alliance International Festival, another successful night, celebrating our community. Um, also was at the Night to Unite. Want to thank the, the police and Liz Carlson, who was, who kind of organized that whole project, and all the, the staff that was involved, uh, like you said, a hundred and fourteen parties. That really, that's, that's great for our community, and it, and getting everybody out there is important to, uh, have a good time, and it, it makes us a community that has a sense of place and adds to that value, so, thanks for that.
Counselor Mokel?
I also attended Night to Unite last night. Um, it was a great night, and I, we had a hundred and fourteen parties, but yet we didn't have to do as many this year, so I thought that was great, that we had all the volunteers from the police and fire that were willing to go around, uh, and public works as well. Um, I also took the survey, and you know, the one thing that I will add to that was my, part of my conversation was, um, sometimes it's just asking us, the drivers of those roads, each and every day, that maybe we have our own unique solutions, and, um, that maybe the engineers aren't always thinking about. Um, so, opening that up to, for that communication. Um, and then I had Spuck last night. Um, on the water side, they, um, have had a high of a hundred mil, a hundred million, um, per day. They're checking their gate valves in the streets right now. Um, they also finished their last week of water, or last week was, they finished up all the water, um, with the reconstruction, so I understand that that is ready to go for us. They also, we also had a presentation, um, in regards to the Windermere Booster Station design. Um, it will be designed to handle the two-hundred residents plus Benedictine community. Um, so they averaged that to about three-hundred-and-fifty residents if it was complete people, because when they talk about residents, they're also talking about water for the lawns and things like that, so. Uh, where the Benedictine community won't need all of that. Um, it's gonna have a more rural look to the building. Uh, I, I think Mr. Kurski, Gregarian, is that what is referred to as? Yes, okay.
Not a pole barn.
Yeah, so not a pole barn, but the Gregarian, it reminds me, um, of the, you know, that has the little, um, what are they called on top of the buildings? Yep, so, very unique, uh, in, in design, and it looked great. So, and on the electric side, they're still peaking, um, twelve-point-eight megawatt usage was their peak this last, um, two weeks, and then they had six outages. One was a squirrel, one customer, one conductor fail for one customer. They had two lightning strikes the Friday night, um, so that was a hundred and one customers, or a hundred and one, um, or seven hundred customers for forty-eight minutes. I believe it was off one oh one. I think that was the transformer that, that might be my notes. Sixth Avenue, they had fifty-one customers for thirty-eight minutes, and they had a squirrel, um, that affected twenty customers for forty minutes. They also had a tree for seven customers for seventy-eight minutes. And that is it. That's what we talked about.
You gotta love those squirrels.
I know, yep.
Suicide squirrel.
Thank you. Uh, administration report?
Yeah, the Night to Unite, uh, last night was a lot of fun in a lot of respects. I, I really enjoy it because it allows me the opportunity to brag, uh, and brag about, uh, staff and, and this community. You know, letting people know about our award-winning, internationally award-winning police force, which just got yet another, uh, award from, uh, the Chief of, International Chiefs of Police. Uh, and then my favorite subject, taxes. You know, I, I would go around and say, who likes paying taxes? Ah, like, you know what, I hate paying them too. And I go, but you know that I pay more for internet than I do for property taxes. Do you know I pay more for cellphone expense than I do for property taxes? And when you put that in perspective, you know, people's eyes kind of light up, and at one point, I'm like, do you know that we actually are one of the lowest taxed communities in the, in the whole metro area? I did not know that. Well, it's true. Uh, and, and, and at one particular party, I was talking with three gentlemen who, uh, were younger than me in, in a neighborhood, and I said, you know, where'd you guys come from? It was a new neighborhood, uh, only been around for a couple of years, and they said, well, you know, we came from Savage, we came from out of state, we came from here. Uh, and as part of that, I said, well, why, why Shakopee? You know, I want to know, why, why? And, and the first guy says, low taxes. He said, low taxes, and the next guy says, yeah, taxes was, was a, a thing for us as well, so, uh, the reality of, of, of us in this community is that we were very fortunate that we're a growing community, and that we have a, an excellent, strong budget uh, that currently is in the top seven percent when it comes to bond ratings, for example, and we will have a triple-A bond rating before we're done. Uh, and we're gonna have some really outstanding good news with this next budget cycle. Uh, and I'm looking forward to, uh, with Darren, uh, walking you all through with that, and, uh, I think you'll see, uh, the value of being in a growing community, and a value of a lot of the changes that we've made over the last three years. So I'm excited about our new budget, uh, and, and boy, we're gonna knock some people's socks off when they see what, uh, what the finance staff and what the department heads and what the employees of this organization, uh, have done, uh, when it comes to budget this year. And that's that. I bragged again.
Thank you. Um, item twelve, Counselor Lehman, other business?
Uh, not at this point.
Item number thirteen.
Other business from anybody else?
Counselor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to August twenty-first, twenty eighteen, at seven PM.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. Uh, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned at ten twenty-eight.
Thank you, everyone.